Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council on March 28, 2023, meeting being called to order at 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, can please take your roll call.
Diva Abdallah.
Here.
Hassan Ahmad.
Here.
Mo Badun.
Here.
Nancy Breyer.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Winslow is absent. Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Madam Clerk. Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by our police officers in the back there. You guys, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Appreciate you guys. Next up is our Agenda Approval, item 3A. Council Chair. Councilman, go ahead. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agenda of the regular meeting on March 28, 2023, with the following changes: removal of 11D, Comptroller King, resolution approval policy of automated cleaning house ACH arrangement and electronic treasury of funds.
Transactions.
What's that?
Transactions.
I'm so sorry, transactions. Ramadan, forgive me.
And clearinghouse.
Yes. Addition to item 13B, temporary food truck cart license application and acceptance of revised backup from item 9E, Comptroller King budget amendment.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Badun and seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad, go ahead.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the regular meeting of March 14, 2023 as outlined in 4-8.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, supported by Councilman Badun. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 4B, minutes from the special meeting of March 21, 2023.
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes of the special meeting of March 21, 2023 as outlined in 4A.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Badun, supported by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion on that?
Councilman.
Right. Coniston.
Yeah.
Councilman Coniston. Councilman Coniston.
Oh.
It was a tie.
It was close, close. I try to spread it out as much as I can evenly. All right, then we'll switch that around, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. First of all, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item is public hearings and comment on agenda items only. Now, you will have three minutes to speak. I'm sorry, two minutes to speak. Please state your name.
Hang on a second.
City and street. Please watch the clock here. And for lack of better words, as I've said at the last meeting, I will say it again, for everyone, please, no personal attacks. And I don't want to get into a position where I'm asking people to have to leave the meeting. So please, let's just all keep it professional, including the council members. Any comments can be made. Everybody's open to make whatever comment they make. They have freedom of speech, but let's keep it professional, please. Go ahead, sir. And this is not referencing you. I'm talking to the whole audience.
Good evening, Zohair Abdalha, Dearborn Heights. I want to thank the police for being here. I appreciate your presence.
This is my gun. Yeah, his mic's on.
Is it okay?
Yes, that's about it.
Okay, I want to talk about the ARPA money. I believe it was intended to mostly to compensate the first responders of our city and the people who worked during COVID. I'm going to ask this council and ask my friend Ray Muscat to put the motion to reserve $400,000 for compensating the first responders and all those people who worked during COVID like any private company did in the whole nation. So I hope that you will hear that from me. The second thing, we gave the mayor $2 million, which was reserved for OPEB, past retirement insurance. And I hope that we return that as reserved in case anything happens in the future. It will be a good practice to keep that $2 million. So if we need to put $500,000 for the general government and $500,000 for the police and fire, the money will be there. Other than that, I would like to ask the city council to ask for actual report, what did we really lose in revenue? And that, the money which we should transfer to the general fund, the rest of it, let's keep it for rainy day. That will be the right thing to do, and that will be the fiduciary responsibility of this council. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, come on up.
Good evening, Sue Kaminsky, Envoy Street, Dearborn Heights. I don't know the agenda number. It's regarding the $30,000 ACH allowed for the police department. I would like this body to highly consider this. Nothing against the police. As I'm a huge supporter of the police and recruitment, but bills are being paid. If they're not being paid, I would like the council to look as to why they're not being paid. So I don't see why the Dearborn Heights Police Department needs this kind of credit. And if this passes, I think you're going to see every department asking for the same thing. If the bills aren't being paid by the treasurer and she's received them, let us know so we as voters can do something, not you as city officials, as it's an elected position. If it's the mail person in the city not dispersing to the comptroller, then that needs to be investigated. And if the comptroller's not giving it to the treasurer for payment, then that needs to be investigated. And I think you will be making a grave mistake by passing this without further investigation. And then regarding open meetings, I'd again like to invite the mayor to please stay and listen to his constituents' concerns. That's it.
Thank you. Come on up.
Hassan Saad, John Daly, Dearborn Heights. As for the police department's credit line, you know, the old chief, he had almost unlimited amount of money. All of a sudden, you guys are putting restrictions. New chief and bills aren't being paid. You guys had no oversight, nobody did, with the old chief that was here in the department, the way they were spending. But now you guys want to scrutinize them and scrutinize them with what they're doing. There's a reason why these bills aren't being paid. It's being done on a personal attack to undermine the administration in the city. That's what it is. I just don't see why how police department gas bills or nothing are getting paid. That's ridiculous. There is money here. People should do their job and sign on everything. That's supposed to be in a timely manner. Plain and simple, for the chief to come and ask and people complain, the money's not going directly to his pocket. It's going to publicly funded vehicles, the police department, which is publicly funded. It's publicly funded money. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Come on up. Name, street.
Hassan, you're a public activist, Dearborn. The item about the chief.
Wait, if I can interrupt you for just a quick second. He did ask for an extra minute. You didn't tell me, was it in the beginning or at the public comments?
Public comments.
Okay, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Okay, so. Instead of having all these bank accounts open for the treasurer and this person and that person, give him a bank account. Let him do all the finances, and you guys will go over it. If the treasurer or whoever doesn't want to sign the checks, he doesn't have to wait for that. Why should we sit there and let the city go into a difficult time just because they have their own agenda? Nobody wants to sign checks. This is what it's all about. Why you putting that on the agenda? That means somebody's not signing checks. You can look, I'm looking at it right now. It says he needs extra money. Open a bank account for him. Forty-two bank accounts he got open for who? For me? For who? I just want to know who the bank accounts are open for. Why doesn't the chief and police, everybody has their own bank account. He's the man in charge. He's got the mayor, he's got you guys. At the end, you guys want to audit the what's-it-called? Go ahead, audit him. He does anything wrong, the feds will come pick him up. What's the big deal here? Why are we going to argue about, let's limit how much? Give him a bank account, tell me just how much you want funding? What do you need it for? How come say, well, today I need body cams for my officers. It's going to cost this much. Or I need this, or I need that. Everything's paper trail. He does anything wrong, he'll be arrested. Nice and simple.
Thank you, sir.
Hello. Was there somebody else? Do you want? Oh, okay, do you want?
But if you could do me a favor, as I always ask for, let me know if you're speaking as a treasurer or as a resident.
I'll speak as a treasurer.
Okay.
All right, great.
But then is it on a specific item?
It is. It's going to be the $30,000 credit card limit.
Then can you do me a favor? Let's start doing it this way, if you don't mind. Treasurer, can we do that maybe right before?
You want to do it during that discussion?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
I'm happy to do so.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
That'd be great. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Hi.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello.
I'm Lisa Aloue, Campus Drive. I'm here on behalf of myself and the Dearborn Heights Cat Coalition. The Dearborn Heights Cats Coalition was formed last year to serve as a way to educate the citizens of Dearborn Heights on how to responsibly care and feed feral cats. We also perform TNR services, which is trap, neuter, vaccinate, and then release feral cats. It's an effective and humane way to reduce the cat population. Tonight, I'm here to speak about Section 1 2B, the unlawful feeding of feral cats and dogs. We respectfully ask that the wordings be changed to the unapproved feeding of animals. And that will protect the responsible feeding of feral cats while addressing the problem of ground feeding. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Where is next? Come on up, ma'am.
Malak Fawaz, Centralia Street, Dearborn Heights. I'm here regarding the cat feeding ban also because we thought that there won't be a ban. There will just like responsible feeding, responsible caring, taking the cats to be fixed. But now, this is like, the city is trying to change this, and this is really inhumane. Like, even like if we go with the human rules, at least we must have feelings and not see animals suffering and starving. Religions, like even in Islam, Imam Hassan, like he was eating, and a dog came to him, and he was feeding him one piece for him and one piece for himself. And someone told him, would you like me to give him away? And he said, no, I can't eat and watch like this soul being hungry. So it doesn't make sense. Like, one of the cats that I'm feeding, she, when she came, she was breastfeeding, she was nursing, and she was like skin on bone. It doesn't make sense to let the cats starve and die. So I would appreciate like a humane decision in this regard. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I did ask for an extra minute.
Yes.
For this one.
Wait, hold on, one sec, please.
Yeah.
Hold on, please. Just, you know, just two minutes. Two minutes, and I'll give you a minute after.
I trust you, Ray.
Go ahead. Wait, hold on one sec. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead. Can you do me a favor on your phone when I tell you, go ahead, with an extra? How about I just start three minutes on my phone, guys? That's fine. I'll let you know when we're at. Just give me one second. Go ahead. I don't want anybody saying I'm violating anything. I'm just. Let me know when you're ready to go, and I'll start. Technology is definitely not our specialty.
We're working on it, though. We've got the clock. We're working on it. That's improvement. I like it.
There's a way to change this. I just got to go back into it. It takes another minute or so to do it.
You ready? We'll have to figure that out, the process. All right.
Three, five, two, one, go.
Rachel Lapointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. I've got a whole laundry list here, so I'll go through the ones that don't have questions first. 9G, the ARPA funds, I honestly think that this is necessary to just supplement our regular budget, so I have no problems with doing that. I really wish, in the words of our governor, that we could just fix the Dam Creek with all of that $24 million, but we can't because we need to fix our budget, and that's the bottom line. But I feel that you guys need to direct the administration on how you want them to utilize that fund specifically, whether it's for things like payroll or utilities or specific projects that we've already had in the works or maybe got delayed because of COVID. At the very least, I would hope that you guys would demand very detailed accounting on how every penny of this ARPA money is spent. I know I'm already planning on folding it. It's always better to start with good accounting than to try and go back and fix it from in the future, as we know with the bank reconciliations. With the 9G, the petty cash, that's way too high. Petty cash is supposed to be small. The chief said in the letter that he needed to pay invoices promptly. That tells me that it's actually a process problem, that this is a Band-Aid to fix a process problem. We need, you guys, whoever needs to do this, needs to really look at how bills process through the city, whether it goes from like a department head to whoever, to whoever, how that process works, where the hiccup is. The animal sheltering agreement needs to be amended. Right now, it says that the fee is per month per animal. The wording in that sentence is terrible. It should maybe be changed for all animals that the city sends there in a month. Also, it went up by $1,200 per month. Last year, that contract was only $4,500 a month. Now it's $5,726. It's a $70,000 a year contract. I would really love to know when's the last time we investigated alternatives to MHS? If there's a cheaper option, if there's another option. It's a big contract, and there might be some ways to save money there. The ordinance for the animals, I still feel that it could be construed to ban gardens. I'd love to see a line in there that says home gardens are not included in this. Obviously, you know, they're going to feed animals indirectly, so we need to kind of get that figured out. 8E, why was Wayne County not paying their rent since 2017, and why did we not try and collect that? That is crazy to me. The Van Born corridor, love the overlay district. I just am a little frustrated because when I went to the planning commission meeting last November on this, because I live in the South End right by there, we were told that that was not the official public hearing and that there would be another one. Now it's ready to go, and I did not see anything about another public hearing. So I would love to see if you guys could get a real public hearing set out. Send paper invitations to every business on Van Born. Send them a copy of the overlay district. Invite them all to come. They're the ones this is really going to affect.
Okay.
And then, can I just, that was, I thought that was the other one. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next up.
Leonard Isaac, Huron Street, Dearborn Heights.
Okay, sir, if I may interrupt you for just a second, because earlier you told me what you're going to be speaking about. That's why I give you a heads up. If it's not on the agenda item, you wouldn't be able to speak on it. So yours would be public comment. Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you, sir. And that would be at the end. Actually, that's a better one. You'll have three minutes. You'll have longer time. Anybody else in here? What's that?
She wants to see the agenda.
It's up there.
She can't see all the way up.
You know what, ma'am? You're welcome to borrow mine, but give it right back. Maybe you have an extra agenda?
Yeah, she can have one.
You got it, she got it, okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Matthew DeVos, City of Inxter Beach Daily. I want to comment addressing Agenda Item 9C. On behalf of the owners of Dearborn View Apartments, I'm here to voice our concerns and urge that City Council oppose the change order of number two. I know our attorneys have submitted a formal letter addressing the mismanagement of this project, but I want to verbalize the residents' frustrations that they weren't notified, that this has been an ongoing problem for seven months. They're often forced to wait and not be able to get home for over 30 minutes. The residents have, you know, they're moving out because of this, and obviously, no one knew was moving in. It's affecting over 800 different residents in the City of Inxter right now.
Appreciate it, sir. And just so that you're aware, our, there he is, our city engineer, Ali Deep, is heard. He's the main one that obviously needs to know that. And he'll obviously look at it. Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
She's got a question.
On an agenda item or a public comment?
Agenda.
I don't think you want the public comment, but nonetheless.
No, we're over here now.
Nonetheless, I want to know, because I'm late coming in here, and I didn't read this thing here. I want to know, could I speak about the trash?
Okay, if you could just give me just one sec, ma'am. On the trash, because it's not an agenda item, you will have the opportunity, and again, as I mentioned to the gentleman, it's even longer. You'll have three minutes during the public comments, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Thank you very much, ma'am. We always enjoy your comments.
Who's this good-looking?
Yeah, yeah. Sitting on the floor, what are you doing?
Al Abdallah, Lila Lane, Dearborn Heights. So in regards to 6428 North Inxter Road and the corner of Hasp, we got the council to approve it to stay commercially zoned, to build commercial properties. And we have it, having it changed, the planning commission got it approved and changed to CX to allow them to put apartments on top of the commercial buildings, which would help, of course, my client in having some possible residents from the hospital or from the medical or, you know, medical business, pharmacy, et cetera, medical world, to be able to live in those apartments or whoever else. So I just asked the council to continue with this process, and since the planning commission approved it, I asked the body, the council, to also approve it. Also approve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else with comments on agenda items? All right, we have two young lady and a gentleman. One more. You want one more? Yeah, no. Yeah, Mariana, oh yeah, no, of course. So let me just make sure I get the two people that are on Zoom, please. Mariana first, thank you. Okay, so let's start first with the, I'm sorry. They can't, I doubt it. Okay, Barbara, can you go ahead and unmute? Okay, before we start your time, Councilman Muscat would like to know, are you able to see the time from Zoom by any chance?
I doubt it.
Yes, I can.
You can, okay.
Too good.
Okay, perfect. All right, so name, we see it here, but if you don't mind repeating names, city, street, and you'll have two minutes on an agenda item. Go ahead.
Okay, Barbara Sapirsky, Woodworth Circle, Dearborn Heights. This is about item 11A, the animal ordinance. Concur with the previous comments. The banning of feeding remains cruel and humane, not scientifically based. It's my understanding that the animal control and our group met since the first review of the ordinance in June of 2022 and plus the study session on 7/19 in 2022. In August, the TNR group did a trial and captured 37 stray cats, found homes for 33 of them, and four were provided caregivers at the cost of $13 per cat, and that was at their own expense. The Chair of Council indicated and spoke at the tree ordinance that people should be allowed to do what they want on their property. So this should also apply for this animal ordinance. If people want to take pity on starving animals, they should be allowed to do so. I would suggest that this ordinance as written be disapproved or at least tabled to allow another meeting between administration and the TNR group to find out why they could not come to an agreement on a better written ordinance. And this time have a mediator to help them solve the problem and understand the problem as well. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up on Zoom, we have Sam. If you can unmute, sir. Yeah, he can. I see now. You'll have two minutes, name, street, and city, please. Sam, are you there? Okay, Sam, I gave you three opportunities. Sam, once, twice, if you can unmute. And great time.
Go to Vince, and then come back to Sam.
All right, go ahead, Vince. City, street, name, please.
Good evenings, Mr. Chair, Vince Kravtowski, Columbia Street, Wayne County, Dearborn Heights. I'd like to speak about item 7E, the award bidding for the car path repair at the golf course. I don't know what they did in the past regarding that car path, but $800,000 to put in a car path or wherever it is there is steep, especially since we have no real experience with a company that is going to be furnishing the golf services. I think we should wait to see what kind of outcome we have financially with them before we put in a path. I understand the billings are in pretty bad shape, and it was pretty amazing how quick these bids came in. But if we could hold off on approving that one, we could save some money there for life. Also, the chief's increase for his $30,000 credit card. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it's the comptroller that prints the checks and turns them over to the treasurer for signing. If the comptroller's not getting the checks printed out properly, then maybe you ought to look over at the comptroller's officer. And if she can't do the job, maybe like Mr. Muscat said, eliminate that department and go with Plant, Moran directly. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, sir. We'll go to, Sam, are you there? Sam, unmute. I seen his name move, so. Okay, next up, we have. Council Chair, Madam Clerk, why don't you try to put his hand down? Then if he puts his hand back up, that way we know he's responsive. Let's go on now. Thank you. Okay, next up is Robert Bunker. Are you going to be speaking as a resident or as someone that works in, I assume it's the same person, or someone that works in the ordinance department?
Resident.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
I'm speaking on 11A.
Okay, name, city, street, please.
Oh, that's right. Rob Bunker, Jackson Street, Wayne County.
Okay.
I'm speaking on 11A. Just a couple of things I'd like to point out. As for, oh, that's a good idea. As for unintentional feeding, as Ms. Lapointe pointed out, for gardens, an unintentional feeding would be someone that doesn't tend their garden and look at, I would look at a garden as unintentional feeding. If you just grow it, let it drop, let it rot, that's unintentional feeding. Gardens really shouldn't be on that. And as for the ordinance itself, I really want to point out to everybody involved that it's not about cats. Cats is a small section of a subsection. The ordinance is about ground feeding in general. Cats are a small part of it. There are things that should be changed or may be changed, but it is a small portion. And unlawful feeding is the big point. Unlawful is not done properly. Proper feeding is not unlawful. Everybody seems to be making a big point about cats when they're not looking at the rest of the ordinance. Unlawful feeding is not done. Unlawful feeding is when someone wants to just go throw food all over their yard and let the neighbor's car get its wires chewed up by rats. That's unlawful feeding. If you're doing proper feeding techniques and you're TNRing the cats that are in your neighborhood and you're taking care of them so that you don't end up with fixing cats in your neighborhood because you want to feed the cats, that's unlawful feeding. But if you're doing it properly, where you're taking care of them to make sure that the food is cleaned up so that raccoons, opossums, rats can come in later, and you're making sure the population does not increase, that's lawful feeding or could be lawful feeding. Cats are a very small portion, change of this ordinance in general.
Okay, thank you, sir. And we're going to have Mariana next, but we're going to do one, let's go ahead, Mariana.
Sam just raised his hand.
He did raise his hand? Okay, Sam, are you on there? Can you unmute yourself, please? Sam?
He tried to. He attempted. He's not having any luck unmuting.
Okay, let's have Mariana go first. So Mariana's got about a, I'm sorry? No, she's got a two, three-minute video that we're going to watch on ARPA. got a two, three minute video that we're going to watch on ARPA funds. About a two-minute video, I watched it already, just explaining a little bit about the process. And then we'll go back to Sam and then we'll continue with the meeting.
I'm, just Sam sent me, I'm asking, she sent me a screenshot. It said, the host is not allowing participants to unmute themselves.
Okay.
I am. I'm asking her to unmute. That's how the everyone's got it.
Okay, Sam, are you still on here? Yeah, she's been on muting.
I saw it. It seems like there's some type of glitch.
Okay, so go ahead, Mariana, let's go ahead and run this one.
Good afternoon, Mariana Hernandez, Chief of Staff. I just wanted to share this quick video from the Department of Treasury that explains a little bit of what the ARPA revenue loss is. I know we had some public hearings about ARPA. Those videos are also available on our website if anybody has additional questions, but this is just a very brief summary of what those funds are.
Just real quick, Councilor Chair, I think there are some people in the audience or that are out in the hallway and you don't want to violate the Open Meetings Act. So if you want to offer them to come in as well before we start that.
Yeah, door is open.
Okay, if you want to go, let them know.
The door is not locked, so nobody's blocking the door. They can want to come in, they can come in.
Hi, Mariana.
Few elements of the final rule related to them. First, I'll cover the eligible use of replacing public sector revenue loss. As a reminder, this is the most flexible eligible use category, as recipients can generally spend these funds on any service traditionally provided by a government up to the amount of their revenue loss. Under the IFR, recipients were required to calculate revenue loss according to a formula. The final rule instead provides an option for recipients to either use that formula or elect a flat standard allowance of revenue loss up to ten million dollars. The standard allowance amount is based on an analysis of average state and local revenues across the country and dramatically simplifies the program and eases administrative burden, particularly for cities and towns that may have limited administrative capacity. Electing the standard allowance does not increase a recipient's total award amount. For example, if a recipient has a total award amount of nine million dollars, they may spend up to nine million dollars on government services if they elect the standard allowance, but their total award size remains that nine million dollars.
All right, so this goes on for fifteen minutes and it explains every aspect of it, but I think in that quick video clip, you understand we are a city that has a small amount of people capable of doing this work for us as far as the administrative tasks in all of our departments. I've also invited Plant Moran to help us explain that a little bit, but again, ultimately, it's the most flexible way for us to use that revenue and the least administrative needs that the city would have to do if we opt to use the ten million dollars allowance. And Holly Stefanski is here from BLN if you, if she wants to say a few things.
You put the video on the city's website?
Sure.
Evening, just wanted to give a couple of quick clarification points on the, on the loss revenue because I know it can kind of be a confusing topic. So first, in addition to the information that was in the video, just wanted to highlight that the revenue loss funds are specifically geared to being able to utilize those for government services. So government services, as defined by the final rule, generally include services traditionally provided by a government, including construction of roads and in other infrastructure, provision of public safety and other services, and health and educational services. So funds spent under these, this government services category are subject to streamlined reporting and compliance requirements. So what that means is if the loss revenue is within that category, you still have to report, you still have to track it, but the requirements are less stringent than they are in the other areas. One of the other points that I wanted to make that's not included in the video clip, but I think is helpful in the conversation, is that there is a requirement that an election be made as to which method is used, those two methods being, one, the standard allowance up to ten million dollars, or the other one being the, the calculation that's stipulated in the rule that requires a recalculation every four years. So you do have to make an election. That initial election, election had to been included in the reporting back in April of twenty-two. You can, however, change that election up and through April of two thousand twenty-three. So I just wanted to highlight that, that there was flexibility built into it. But once you make that election as of either tonight or whenever, it does have to be stipulated in your reporting during April twenty-three, and then at that point, you can no longer change your mind. So you can't flip-flop between the methods that are being used. So just wanted to highlight those couple of things and hopefully give you a little bit more information on the topics.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very much. We're going to go back to Zoom, Sam. Can you unmute, please? Are you unmuting him on your end, Madam Clerk? Can you let him know to unmute on his end, please? Okay, I may go next to Amy. If you can unmute, please.
Good evening, I'm Amy Ruark. I actually live in Westland. I have assisted many Dearborn.
Amy, Amy, I'm going to interrupt you for a second, please.
Sure.
Name, city, you said Westland, and street, please, and then you'll have two minutes.
Is it on agenda?
Yeah, she's going to be speaking. Once she speaks, it's not an agenda item, you're allowed. Go ahead.
Yes, it's Amy Ruark, R-U-A-R-K. It's in Westland. I live on Ron Street.
Okay.
And I'm speaking on the no-feeding ordinance.
Okay.
I wanted to just make a couple of points. I know that Rob Bunker said that cats are just a very small part of it. With the number of community cats that are in Dearborn Heights, I would not consider them to be only a small part of the ban. I have assisted many Dearborn residents with TNR, with controlling their colonies, with helping them to learn how to appropriately feed. I just want to note that the ordinance specifically says it is unlawful for any person to feed any feral cat or dog by any means, including hand feeding or setting out food, whether or not attended or unattended. I don't think that's splitting hairs to say that that's a huge concern, is to forbid feeding feral cats or dogs at all. And that's what I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you very much, ma'am. And Sam, this can be the last, did you, did you catch him?
She did. So we'll try again one more time.
Can you unmute, please?
He's trying.
Yeah, he keeps coming, I don't know. Okay, here we go. All right, can you hear us? Sam, are you able to unmute him? Okay, they're going to try something else. Anybody in the audience have a public comment, just in case? Okay.
Do I have one?
No, you're not going to go again. I knew you'd have one.
You said if. I tried.
Councilor Chair?
Try now. Yeah, okay, go ahead. Try to unmute right now, Sam.
No, it's still not working.
I want to give him the opportunity to speak just because of, you know, freedom of speech and, and he should have his opportunity, whoever he is. But unfortunately, I don't know if it's from our end. I don't know if you can call maybe, call him on his cell phone, maybe I'll put him on speakerphone here, if you like. Okay, we're going to go to Plan B, Sam. Hopefully you can hear us.
She said it's okay.
Sorry about the delay. Roman Speaker, yeah, right there, please.
I'm sorry for the technical difficulties. My name is Sarah Malek. I live on Outer Drive in Dearborn Heights, and I'm just very concerned about the wording in this ordinance for the feeding ban. So I'm just confused. I don't think everybody's on the right page because we discussed with the city what we were going to do on our end, and we held up anything, anybody that ever came to us for any assistance with feral cats or stray cats, we held up our end of our promise. So I'm not really sure what's going on. I heard about this Sunday night, so it was really news to me because we never received any emails or any form of communication that we were lagging or we weren't doing what we were supposed to. So I know Officer Bunker spoke, and Officer Bunker, I just want to say that what you're reading is not what we are reading. So we need to know what exactly is stated in this ordinance, and that's all.
Okay, thank you very much. Glad we were able to get you on. Appreciate it. All right, with no additional public comments, comments, I'm sorry. Next up is fund transfers and current claims. Councilor Chair, Councilman, go ahead.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the current claims six dash one through six dash thirty as submitted.
Motion made by Councilman Bedu and supported by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item seven A, consideration of bids. C E D D Director Jamal bid award.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for the recent center carpet replacement project to New Carpet and Flooring Incorporated as lowest qualified bidder in the amount of thirty-two thousand eight hundred and four dollars, plus up to twenty percent in change orders as needed according to the bid response package and authorize the Controller's Office to return all bid bonds to the unsuccessful bidders. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment as follows: eighteen thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars, twenty-seven cents from the C E D D C D B G Restricted Fund one oh three, nine sixty, nine sixty-three point zero one eight, and the remaining balance is calculated at time of completion from the C E D D C D B G Restricted Fund one zero three, nine six zero, nine six three point zero two two. Furthermore, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign a contract on behalf of the city, pending any necessary legal adjustments by Corporation Council that may be required according to the related laws and regulations outlined in seven A.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat and seconded by Councilwoman Brier. Is there any discussion on that? I do want to make a disclosure. The company that is in here with the, with the bids and that's being recommended, I do have a relationship with that particular, with the owner of that particular company. So I try to make that fully disclosed. And I did speak with the Corporation Council. He said I can still vote as long as I don't have no financial interest. I have zero financial interest in this particular company other than them being related to me. Okay? I'm sorry? Yeah, so you can't count it from there. But I am, I am, again, I'm fully disclosing I am related to them. And if the council body feels comfortable, I don't mind not voting on it. As a matter of fact, I'm going to make a decision right now. I'm not going to vote on it.
Yeah, just recuse yourself.
Okay, I'm going to recuse myself.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, so any discussion on this? Go ahead. Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I got to go back. The motion was made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilwoman Brier. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. And one recused. Next item on the agenda is item seven B, City Engineer Deeb, bid award Warren Valley Golf Course replacement of outdoor electric panel.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Hassan.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for the replacement of the outdoor electric panel serving the irrigation system at Warren Valley Golf Course to IB Electric Inc. as the lowest bidder in the amount of five thousand six hundred thirty-two, and authorize the Controller's Office to return all bid bonds to the unsuccessful bidders. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants on behalf of the city and the treasurer to issue payment from GL Account one oh one seven five three nine three two zero 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 as outlined in seven dash P.
Support. A motion made by Councilman Hassan Ahmad and supported by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion on that? Well, I had a question for Deeb. If you don't mind, please. One of the concerns I had is, first of all, is this over the budget? And I know Councilman Hassan Ahmad is going to address that a little bit in a sec. But, so I had that concern also, and I know you sent an email out, and I know Hassan Ahmad also has got that email. So I'll, out of courtesy, I'll leave it for him to address that. But I had a concern in regards to a prefab unit, a hundred and fifty-four thousand. Now, I'm not an expert on construction.
That's the wrong item.
That's a different.
Okay, that way on that one. Go ahead.
So, thank you, Councilor Chair. This, this, this project or the item number seven B is for an electric, outdoor electric panel, high voltage, which supplies the electricity to the main pump that draws different water into the pond for irrigation purposes. That, that panel has been leaning, it's active, it's, it's life, and it's almost swimming. So we're replacing it with a new panel, getting it away from the river, you know, to safely operate the pumps.
Is that one on the north side of the river?
It's on the north side, yes.
It has holes about the size of my fist rustles.
I know. We're, we're not repairing that.
Yeah, that's got to be thrown out.
It is, it is going out, yes. And so it was, we, we had three prices and we're, we're selecting the low bidder.
It's a good price for that. Okay, and, and will this one be a part of the eight hundred thousand that we had authorized for a certificate of occupancy?
So the eight hundred that you referred to are the CFO, and this is, yes, this will be part of the certificate of occupancy. That is a safety item. We must have it repaired. So yes, it is part of it. It is part of the eight hundred.
Okay, and for those in the audience that are not familiar, we had agreed as a city that we would be providing a certificate of occupancy on the property, capping it, so limiting it to no more than eight hundred thousand dollars being paid for by the city slash residents. Okay, any other questions on this?
I was going to hit for part seven E, that's the one.
Okay, you want me on that one? Okay, that's fine. Any other questions on seven B? Okay, Karen, do you have something, Councilman, or no?
None.
Oh, okay. All right, so motion made by Council, Councilman Hassan Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Muscat. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item seven C, City Engineer Deeb bid award.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for two outdoor restroom repairs at Warren Valley Golf Course. The Allied Building Services of Detroit is the lowest bidder in the amount of nineteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy-six cents, and authorize the Comptroller's Office to return all bid bonds to the unsuccessful bidder. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants on behalf of the city and the treasurer to issue payments from GL Account one oh one seven five three nine three two point zero 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 as outlined in seven C.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Bedu. Any discussion on that? Deeb, I had a question. I always get concerned when I see estimates on anything, okay, including at my house. And when I see like in this case, fifty-nine thousand eight hundred, one estimate, another bid, I say bid, another bid, forty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty, so in a fifty to sixty thousand dollar range. And then I see a drop of nineteen, which obviously sounds pretty, I mean, that, that sounds pretty easy, but it also raises red flags. So the question I have for you is, without naming the specific company, although it is public record, Allied Building Services of Detroit. I have a concern with that drastic of a difference. Were you as concerned? And, and give us your input on that.
Yes, sir. I was normally, but just one comment, though, when I estimated those, the eight hundred thousand, I went through all these projects and we put estimates, and this was pretty close. My estimate was twenty-two thousand. So it came in close. Now, I don't know why the two other companies, but what we did is we made a mandatory site visit prior to the bid. So we wanted to make sure that all the bidders understood, and we had all the facilities open. So we opened everything. We explained all, to all of them during the walkthrough, exactly what we're looking for, you know, what kind of material. I mean, it is an outdoor restroom, so we're, we're not doing the Taj Mahal. We're, we're doing the basics, right? So just to clean up and make it usable and repair the hole in the roofs and stuff. So it is, it, as to why they put high numbers, I can't say, but I, after the.
No, no, I'm okay with going with the lowest bidder.
But I, I made sure, I called the company to make sure they didn't miss anything. So actually, one of the best bids that was received for that work was their bid. They were more detailed. If you look at the submittals, a lot more details than, than the forty-four thousand.
So the next question I had for you is, have you worked with them in the past? The name sounds familiar, although I do know that even on cartoons, you see the name Allied all the time. So I don't know if that's why, but I just want to make sure. Is it, is it a company you're familiar with? Have you dealt with them?
No, I haven't, but the operators have at the golf course, and they said they highly recommend it. They.
That makes me comfortable.
Councilor Chair.
Thank you, go ahead.
I, I had the same concern like you, and I did look up the company, and I know they've been in business since nineteen forty-eight, so.
It's, it's, it's an established company. They've done a lot of work, and they also are on, on. It's, it's, it's an established company, they've done a lot of work, and they also are on the Michigan State bid list so that you can award to them without bid, but in our case, we publicly bid it and advertised it, and they still came in low.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments on this? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item D, City Engineer Deeb Bid Award Warren Valley Golf Course Equipment Storage, Storage Building Construction. Council Chair. Councilwoman, Councilwoman, go ahead, go ahead, Councilman.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council Award the bid for the construction of a prefabricated equipment storage building at the Warren Valley Golf Course to Dave's Contracting Inc. as the lowest bidder in the amount of a hundred and fifty-four thousand two hundred and eleven dollars, and authorize the Comptroller's Office to return all bid bonds to the unsuccessful bidders. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from G L account one zero one seven five three nine three two dot zero 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 as outlined in seven D.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilwoman Breyer and seconded by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion on that? Well, I had a question, as you know, from earlier.
Sure.
Um, and, and, well, I'll have to apologize on behalf of some of us, our fasting, because it's Ramadan, so sometimes our brains are not kicking in as quick as we'd like. Um, but I, I, you know, I'm not a builder by any stretch of the imagination, and I've seen, um, the other bids which were obviously quite higher. This was the lowest bidder at one fifty-four, we had one at one eighty-nine, and one at two thirty-six, which, which almost, it's almost laughable sometimes the differences in bids. I, I, I don't get it, you think they would be within like three, four, five percent of each other. But yeah, sometimes you see thirty, forty percent difference. But the biggest concern that I had is, is twofold. Number one, is this within the eight hundred thousand dollars for a certificate of occupancy? Number two, is that a certificate of, I say, threefold. Number two, was that a certificate of occupancy requirement? Number, and it's fourfold, I should say. Number three, why did we decide to change this? And the biggest question I had, I just, and again, I'm not an expert in this field, but it just seems like a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars for a prefabricated, um,
Barn.
You know, barn, I, I don't know, just the numbers are, are mind boggling, because it seems like you could almost build a nice fifteen hundred square foot home for this. But I'm being sarcastic, but it just, it's, I'm just not, not getting it.
All right. Let's start by, by, um, so up until now, the first two projects you approved are part of the CFO.
Correct.
Right? So this is the first project that is not part of the eight hundred.
Correct.
Why? So the, the reason for that is we, we currently, we, we have replaced most of our outdoor equipment, right? So all the lawn equipment and stuff that the city is purchasing has no place to stay. Prior operators just left them out in the open. So as a result, when they left, all the stuff that we had left with were considered trash. Even trash was, they rusted. You left them out in the elements, right, year round. So what we're trying to do here is to, to, um, put the least expensive way of protecting, you know, short of a, um, tent. This is a prefab building that is really the bottom, I mean, it's not luxury of any kind. It is a protection for all the outdoor equipment that we have, um, so they're not staying out in the open. A hundred and fifty-four thousand, we looked at the number, um, it is reasonable, that is the current cost, because it is sixty-four feet long and thirty-two feet wide with double, uh, overhead doors, industrial doors, you know, machinery. And the only utility we have in there is electricity, just so we can charge equipment. So there's no storm, there's no drainage, there's no bathroom in it. It is simply a garage, an oversized garage to protect the equipment that we paid a lot of money for.
So is this an additional building?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so it, it would be totally separate from the one as, if you're looking at the building to your right, that's totally separate from that building, the one between Riverside and the golf course, and, and, uh, the hall.
I don't know, right and left, but, but if you walk into the, this is located out in the maintenance complex. So as you approach the maintenance, uh, complex, you have a building on the south.
You're talking about in the center of the golf course?
Yeah, yeah, the maintenance complex. So as you go, we have an open vacant piece of land that was used in the past for, uh, to collect trash, cleaned it up, and, uh, this will, this will be the area, uh, that we will put that building on. It's prefabbed, so the installation should be easy, and it is, it is conveniently located within the complex itself, within the maintenance complex. So this way, when, when they're done with the lawn equipment and the machinery, they can just simply store them indoor and protect them.
But we very committed to spending two and a half million dollars on the golf course. And some of these numbers are starting to obviously add up, and we're going past that, that figure.
So you do have the option not to do that, but all the equipment that, that we're purchasing has to be put somewhere, right? And we can leave it outdoor like the prior operator did, but it's not gonna last. So you're leaving, uh, expensive equipment outdoor, that's what our prior operator did. They did not last. You're leaving them year round, out in the open.
There's no space for them in that storage area if you're facing the building to your right?
That's what they use for, um, uh, the chemicals and the lawn fertilizers and things of that nature. Golf, well, the golf carts are actually in the.
Well, but they said the golf carts give you this.
Yeah, no, they're, they're up in the main, main garage, which is, uh, next to the, um, uh, building itself.
Yeah, the one right to the right of that.
Yeah, yeah, that's the complex, that's the original. I'm talking about the maintenance complex in the middle of the field, yeah. So, no, there is no place for them, and, 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 you know, the prior operator just left them out in the open. You know, I mean.
Who did the equipment belong to with the prior?
Council Chair.
Council Chair, next. Council Chair, thank you.
Councilman Bedu, you're next.
Um, uh, so, so my question is, so you answered one of the questions, was what did we do with the prior equipment? And then secondly, the equipment that we currently have now belongs to the city.
Repurchased.
Okay, where are they being stored now?
Out, outdoor.
So the wear and tear is already being added now?
Well, they, we just, some of them, we just, we just received them. I mean, we're buying stuff as we, as we get. Now, the only ones we're protecting are the golf carts. They're all indoor, they're protected. But in terms of lawn equipment, we have a lot of machinery that needs to be protected. So, you know, you can't put like fertilizers in the bags, you can't leave them outdoor. So they're in that small damaged building that we have, the green building. Um, but, you know, you want to protect your investment, you need to find, and that's the least expensive way to try to protect a million dollar worth of equipment?
Okay, Councilwoman, go ahead.
That was part of my question too about the, the brick garage building.
Yep.
Could I ask how many pieces of equipment we're talking about that we can't squeeze it in with the golf carts?
No, no.
They're big, big, massive.
They're, they're big equipment, there are a lot of them. And that's, that's the main reason, I mean, I don't know the exact number, but I looked at the size of these things when we determine, you know, how large of a, a shed or garage, if you will. And, and we looked at, uh, many options, this was the least expensive option. But again, uh, what we're trying to do is protect our, our own, um, equipment, I mean, it's.
Could a pole barn be used or something like that? That is a pole barn. All right, that was my question.
It is a large, large pole barn, though. I mean, it's sixty-four feet long, so.
What about, if I could just, quick question. From a visual aesthetic standpoint, I mean, that's a pretty big barn in the middle of a golf course, how's that gonna look like just aesthetically? You know, is it gonna be?
It, it's, it's actually.
Is it gonna be an eyesore in the middle of the golf course?
No, it's sandwiched between the, uh, the existing green building, the storage building, um, the Councilwoman was referring to, and the fence in the back, and there are trees. So it is located, you, you, you know, can you see it probably, but it, it's not gonna be an eyesore.
Eyesore, okay.
It's not really tall either. I mean, it's just tall enough to allow for the equipment storage. I don't have high, you know, equipment, I just have lawn equipment that I need to protect. Yes, sir.
Mr. Deeb, briefly, so things like generators, years ago, I was court officer in Livonia, like four years ago, and they had problems on construction sites, that somebody would come, they'd, building a house, they'd take, just take the generator, take the equipment, so it's secure.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
Yep. In addition to protection from the elements, then you can lock them up and have better control over yourself. What we're trying to do is not, not do what our prior operators did. Uh, it wasn't their equipment, it was ours, so we were taking more active, you know, involvement in, in, in the, in the facility, since it is ours.
And the unit has got electricity in it?
That's only, uh, yes, we brought electricity and, and outlets. So we are going to extend the electricity from the outdoor panel or the transformer that we have, extend it to the building and provide, uh, outlets for charging equipment, but that's it, just thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deeb.
Thirty-five pieces of equipment. I just pulled the list.
Oh, okay, that's, that's quite a bit, that's for sure. Okay, so this motion was made by.
Nancy Breyer.
Councilwoman Breyer. And seconded by Councilman Muscat. Any other discussions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, ma'am clerk.
Dave Abdullah?
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Moby Doon?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
No.
Robert Coniston?
Yes.
Ray Muscat?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carried, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is item E, City Engineer Deeb Bid Award Warren Valley Golf Course Cart Path Repair and Extension Contract. Councilman Muscat, go ahead.
I moved at the Dearborn Heights City Council Award the bid for the repair and extension of the cart paths at Warren Valley Golf Course to bow and paving, paving as the lowest bidder in the amount of eight hundred and fourteen thousand eight sixty-six, and authorize the Comptroller's Office to return all bid bonds to the unsuccessful bidder. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from G L account one oh one seven five three nine three two point zero 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 as outlined in seven E.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat and seconded by Councilman Bedu. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
Thank you, Council Chair. So this is the one I talked to Engineer Deeb about it. Can you explain to everybody, because I know it's half, half of it is four hundred thousand, that includes in the CFO, and the other half it's not?
Right.
And do we need to do the other part?
So, um, okay, so, um, two things. Um, one is, is the CFO part consists of repair to existing cart paths. So, um, we have existing paths, not complete, and, um, when the decision was made to open eighteen holes, right? So we wanted to make sure that, so we did a survey, um, to make sure that the, all the playable, uh, holes are connected. I don't know how it was done in the past, but, um, uh, apparently the, the cart paths, players, um, had no continuous paths, the, which is probably the only golf course I know of, that you just, so I have a photo, I just got that today, where you have, uh, cart paths that are in pieces. So the, the CFO items are the ones to repair the existing, the ones that are broken and, you know, they're hazardous, you can't go over. Uh, that's to repair those. Um, so, but once you're done, they're not connected, you need to connect your paths. So the eighteen holes are playable, you'll be able to.
That takes you to the non-CFO work needed, correct?
Non-CFO, so I broke it into, uh, to, what I'm doing in this, and, and I emailed you the, the breakdown, I'm constantly trying to keep the numbers for the CFO items under the approved, the council-approved, um, budget. And so far we are, but there are additional things that are coming up. Uh, this, the, to connect the pass is one of them. And then we also had high water levels, um, I'm not really sure, but near, near the building itself, there are two areas that have, um, erosion so bad that sunk in, in, in the river. So basically, when you pick up your cart, you go into the, um, uh, pro shop, get your, um, uh, cart, and you pick it up from the garage, and then as you enter the play area, there are two sections. We call them area A, and area A and area B that have, um, sunk in the river. The water level is so high that it's just eroding the cart path. And these things are not safe. I mean, you can't physically drive over them, so I can't have people coming out, pick it up, pick up a brand new cart, and then take it to the play area through these two areas. So what we did, and those were not in the, in the original, um, estimates either. So we had them, again, uh, we invited public bidders, and we showed them the exact locations of what it is that we're trying to do. We designed this cross-section, how thick we want that pavement to be, and, because we're, we're doing asphalt, right? And, uh, so one of the challenges we had was that asphalt plants obviously are not open, they will soon, and, um, contractors wanted to make sure that they, they know what the prices are before they put a bid in, right? So, um, we were able to receive, um, three bidders, and, um, what we have, um, uh, before you is broken down into, um, price for repairs of the original, price for the extension, and the price for those two areas that sunk in, in the river. So that's how it's broken, the contract will be. So the cart paths for the repairs, we put it not to exceed four hundred, obviously, because we haven't done the, you know, we have to go and mark all the locations still. Uh, but the, the plan, because we want to meet the opening day, we wanted to have that place open on time. So the idea was if we get approval, we will have that contract and be the first, you know, customers when the plants are open the next couple of weeks. But in the meantime, I want to do some of the structural repairs on the sunken areas, you know, put some kind of a protection so people don't end up in the river when they pick up the brand new carts. Um, and, and to safely be able to, you know, enter the, um.
You talk about area A and area B, that's erosion?
Yes, area, so we wanted to price them intentionally that way, because I'm, I'm trying to keep, uh, a tab on the costs. So the, um, the part, um, I mean.
I mean, since, since it's, uh, seems like it's a safety issue, how come it's not a CFO issue then?
The area As and Bs were fine last year. It's the, the river, the river itself, and we haven't had a rainy season yet, but I, I've looked at it right after the snow melted, and that water is, is up to the bank. I mean, it's, it's high, I've never seen it that high. I don't know if it's gonna stay that way, but, um, with high water, um, levels, erosion comes, and it made it so that it's, it's a safety issue now.
All right.
Council Chair.
Okay, uh, what else, woman?
Um, what holes are we talking that we have the water damage? Is it at the back of the course?
Yeah, the west, the, the back, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the west end, yeah.
So a question for you, uh, the.
Yes, sir.
These new cart paths, see, I, I, I'm starting to get concerned, and maybe being in the real estate business, I get more concerned about stuff like this, but, you know, like when somebody buys a property and they're gonna flip it, fix it up and flip it, or they're just gonna just fix it up to use it, or whatever it is. And then as you know, those numbers, you know, start to climb. And my concern is, you know, as much as I want this thing to be a beautiful facility, is these numbers are starting to climb. We're starting to get things that, quite frankly, I'm kind of disappointed were not anticipated, because if we look at, for example, the prefabricated building there, okay, well, we probably should have thought about that in the beginning, because we had like two and a half million put out. Well, now we're two and a half, two point six five, whatever it is, million. And now we have these new cart paths extensions, but those extensions were not there before either.
Right.
So now, so now we have three hundred and eighty thousand. Then we talk about, okay, we talk about the equipment.
Five sixty-nine to be exact.
Huh?
Five sixty-nine to be.
Yeah, five sixty-nine for the total. But here's my concern, I don't think we're done. And so now I'm starting to get concerned is, you get to the point where, how much can you keep spending and spending? You know, when I built my house, the owner of our company told me, be careful with your neighbor, Mr. Might as Well. And I said, I didn't meet no Mr. Neighbor, Mr. Might as Well. And he said, no, it's Mr. Might as Well, because you start, you know, might as well do this, might as well do that, might as well do that.
My wife did that.
And next thing you know, we're at three million, three and a half million put in, and honestly, that concerns me, because we as a body here, as I'm sure you are, you're definitely that way, we have, we have a fiduciary duty to look out for the taxpayers, make sure we're not spending money for, on things that maybe are not needed, and maybe weren't recalculated for.
So, Council Chair, all I can say at this point is you do have the option not to extend those things, you, to extend the cart paths, but, um, um, from one, the safety, um, and, and the expectation part of you, uh, if you are to do that at a later date, see, I have a contractor on site with equipment. Just one, keep one thing in mind, the cost per unit, so the unit cost for that work, um, um, is higher than normal parking lot asphalt. The reason for that is you can't use large equipment, uh, in, in a golf course, you know, it's, it's, you have to use specialized equipment. I, I had trouble trying to get access to all the locations, because you can't just drive anywhere, you know, of these. So access is a problem, um, so.
How did they used to drive before?
Yeah, I know, I did that, but, but with asphalt plant, you know, equipment, and so I, I had to find smaller sized equipment. You know, the cart path is only five to six feet wide, right? So it isn't, it isn't that I can use highway equipment, it has to be, so I, I wasn't able to.
Yeah, but I'm asking, why didn't, why didn't we, as a total city, you know, if, if there's a lot of broken paths, to me, it'd be almost common sense that we'd have that included. Why was that never addressed before? See, because I'm concerned now, the numbers are starting to climb, and, and that's starting to be concerning for me.
The original objective, Council Chair, was CFO. Was it a CFO, can you issue a CFO without that? And yes, the answer is yes, you can issue CFO without that. So when we did the estimate for the CFO, it was basically on what is it that we need to do? So like the, the heat, the furnace had to be inspected, your electric had to be inspected, that's the certificate of occupancy, which I'm sure you know. But this, you know, adding a cart path, that's not a CFO. It is, it is nice to have, it is good to have, but.
But a lot of these expenses are also on the first eighteen holes. So when, and if we decide to go to the other holes, the other, you know, the total of thirty-six, now it's gonna be additional funds that we'll be putting out, and then the concern that I've got is, when this, uh, thing is all of a sudden done, we're out three, four, whatever, million dollars.
So what I, the answer to that would be, let's wait and see how the operation. So what I, the answer to that would be, let's wait and see how the operation does before we, we expand it, right? I mean, it's just like any business, if you're not operationally, you know, profitable, you, you, you know, but we need to get, I mean, you can, you cannot do that, you can't, but, um, my recommendation is if you go back and say, now I want to do it, it's gonna cost a lot more, because I need to mobilize again.
Councilor Chair. Uh, just a comment here, you know, when, when people open up businesses, they, they put money into their businesses to get going. Sometimes they go into debt.
Right.
And, you know, we had an opportunity to sell this golf course many years ago when it came to us. Council decided to keep it because the people wanted it. So now the golf course belongs to us. It's us, it's up to us to get this golf course to a position where it can be self-sustaining, okay? We gotta, you gotta give the opportunity for it to be self-sustaining like any other business, okay? And, and sometimes you gotta bite the bullet to do that. I'm willing to bet that this golf course will be self-sustaining in a few years, where we won't even have to, we'll be getting, we'll be bringing in money instead of putting money out. Now, there's a great opportunity for us to do so. Um, my big thing is, my wife always told me I was a, I was scared to do anything to open up a business like a contractor's business with, with the things that I can do, because I was always afraid to do it. Okay, we can't be afraid. This is, this is a golf course. I think it's gonna make it. We got people that live on that golf course that love the looks of it now. Uh, I talked into a few golfers, and they're, they're raring to go at Warren Valley, because, you know, just like the one golfer that saw me at Kroger on Sunday night, he says, Inglewood Valley is horrible now. It's worse than, 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 than Warren Valley ever was. So, uh, you're gonna see a lot of golfers coming back, and I think this golf course will be self-sustaining. And to be honest with you, I don't think we need thirty-six-hole golf course. There's a very limited thirty-six golf, golf courses in this state, and if they are, they're run by the real big shots, okay? All the great golf courses are eighteen holes.
So let me add one more thing, though, uh, just to give you an idea how hard it was to, to get contractors that will do that kind of work, we only received two bidders.
It's labor-intensive, because a lot of it's gonna be done by hand.
It's labor and, and, and it's, it's so, Only two people bid, even after we publicly advertised it for two weeks and then took them out in the, in the field with our operator, we drove them around, and we were only able to attract two, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman?
Sorry, just have one more question. The, the five sixty-nine, I don't know if Madam Treasurer maybe can answer the question. Is that coming out of the two point five, or is it, it's gonna be on top of the two point five?
The general ledger you're talking about?
Yeah, like the extra, not the non-CFO items.
That was from, I don't remember the month, you remember the general ledger? I believe it does come from the two point five, yes.
From the two point five.
Yeah, I don't have that with me, but yes, we did that today.
Okay, so whatever I see here, we still have about close to eight hundred thousand out of the two point five.
Okay, Councilman, go ahead.
I have one more question. It may or may not help, but could ARPA do anything since it's structural? Could part of our ARPA funding go toward?
Water and sewers, I don't know how we can do that.
Okay.
Parks and Rides.
Parks.
Parks.
We got a motion on, let's vote on this. Okay. So, motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Bedun. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No. Dave Abdallah?
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Moby Dun?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
No.
Robert Coniston?
Yes.
Ray Muscat?
Yes.
Motion carries by me.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is item A, A, Reports from Mayor Planning Commission Appointment.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad, go ahead.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the mayoral appointment of Mr. Ali Turfi to the planning commission term to expire January twenty twenty-fifth. This is to fill a vacancy left by Ms. Andrea Zamed, as outlined in eight dash,
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Ahmad and supported by Councilman Bedun. Any discussion on that?
Councilor Chair, we did receive the resume from Mr. Turfi, and he did email, I think he emailed myself and the whole council members, and it seems like a great businessman. He owned a few businesses, and he's been involved with, uh, planning and stuff like this, so I welcome him, uh, and thank him for serving on the planning commission.
Okay. And I, I could say I know Mr. Turfi, a very upstanding, uh, citizen in the community, successful businessman. I've had many, many conversations with him about a lot of different subjects throughout the city. And, um, I, for myself, feel very comfortable with somebody like this being added on, uh, on the planning commission. He's got a very good business mindset, um, and just very good background. I think he'd be a great addition.
Councilor Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman.
On this subject of planning commission, I would like to tell, uh, or, or ask our corporation council to make a little time for me when I give you a call to speak about the planning commission, if you don't mind, sir.
Thank you. And, Councilor Chair.
I will apply with all requests already, and provide documentation that you ask for.
Councilman Bedun, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I just kind of want to echo both you and Councilman Ahmad had stated earlier. Uh, Mr. Turfi is a class act, great young man. Um, believe it or not, I think when I was in high school, he bought a car wash I worked at for like a week, and then he fired me. But the good news is,
Smart young man.
He's really smart.
Believe it or not, as, as, as I was leaving, I was so mad that he fired me, I reversed into his car. It was, it was like a big headache, but Mr. Turfi's truly a class act. Uh, and I'm so glad that he's gonna be serving on the planning commission, and I thank him for serving. And I also thank him for putting the bio in there and wanting to serve, and, uh, thank you to the administration for, um, you know, handing over the, for his, handing over the, um, resume. And not necessarily do I want a resume when we ask for that, even a quick bio that simply says, hey, my name is Ali Turfi, thank you so much to the city and the mayor and the, and the council. This is what I do, this is why I want to serve, and so on. Um, so I thank you guys for that.
Thank you. Um, any other discussions on this? Hearing none? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Congratulations, Mr. Turfi. Uh, next up on the agenda is item eight B, Community and Cultural Relations Commission Appointment.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the mayoral appointment of Ms. Dina Mendoza to the Community and Cultural Relations Commission, term to expire August twenty twenty-three. This is to fill the vacancy left by Ms. Cora.
Laura.
Laura.
Comendo.
Comendo, as outlined in eight B.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman Coniston. Any second on that?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Nancy Breyer. Any discussion on that?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
I just do, want to mention that, um, Ms. Mendoza, she is a practicing attorney, she does have a license, that's a plus. And she does volunteer for the Hispanic community. And we'd like to welcome her and thank you for her service.
Okay. Is, um, Mary, do you, can you tell us anything? I, I, I don't know her. Do you know her, my chance?
That's whatever I've been sent by the administration.
Oh, I didn't get it. Okay, so is there anything else?
She, 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 she volunteers for the Hispanic community, she, she does have a law degree, but she's not practicing, and she does have a license and, um, and I guess she's a good asset to the city.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other discussion on that? Hearing none? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item C, Highview Elementary School Color Run.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
I move that the Dearborn Heights Council grant permission to, to Highview Elementary School to hold their color run on Friday, May twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, at two P M, as outlined in eight C.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Muscat and seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion on that? Hearing none? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item D, Animal Sheltering Agreement, Michigan Humane Society.
Councilor Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the animal sheltering agreement between the city and the Michigan Humane Society for the housing and care of Dearborn Heights domestic animals. In addition, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city, as outlined in eight D.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat and supported by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion on that?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Council. Uh, Councilor Chair, I know I had a, a discussion with the resident, and she is actually in attendance with us today, and she said that she's actually not opposed to to start changing some of the verbiage, and if we were able to change some of the verbiage, she would be okay with the approval. And I believe, uh, most of the individuals that spoke today, the residents that spoke today.
That's on the animal shelter.
That's on, this is on the animal. Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry. It's the fasten, forgive me.
So we know your decision now, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion items on this? Um, I'd, I'd like Director, if you don't mind, just what major, because I, I noticed something we approved um, on a somewhat continuous basis, at least as long as I've been on council. And I know at one point, we even looked into, prior to you being on the ordinance department, we looked into even possibly having our own animal shelter, and I do recall, I don't remember the specifics, but it was just way over, um, our, our budgeted numbers. But with that being the case, what major changes were made between this contract and the previous contract?
There was just some language, thank you, Councilor Chair, there was just some language that was added in there. They kind of did that to everybody um, that's part of Michigan Humane that uses them as a shelter. They just did like a, a basic template and sent them out, and they did the same thing with respect to the costs. There was just some language that was in there that wasn't acceptable. Um, so it's literally, it's the same as it was before, um, except for the costs.
Okay.
Which is just, you know, everything's more expensive now. We tried to mitigate that unsuccessfully. Um, again, that was a, a template that they pretty much did, uh, pretty much everybody, as far as I know. They had to eat the costs as well, so our options are very limited. And there is in there, I believe it's a thirty-day notice. Something better comes along, we can revisit the issue.
Right.
And in addition to that, I wanted to point out that when there's return to owners and surrenders and stuff like that, that mitigates the cost. We generally don't see a, um, it's right now it's forty-five hundred dollars a month, it's usually under that. And I think right now I have about, I want to say twenty thousand dollars left, and that approximately. So we usually don't hit that, that forty-five hundred dollars every single month for the costs. So it's usually under that. So if that makes you feel any better. I mean, I know nobody wants to see the cost go up, but it's the nature of the beast.
Yeah, as a city, like I mentioned, we, we looked into it, and it was just, we tried, uh, with Dearborn, that didn't work out, we tried to consider possibly building our own, you did, that was not,
Yeah, that's, like I tell everybody, it's a great concept. Find me three million dollars and people to staff it, I'm in. I mean, nothing's cheap now, right? The cost of everything's gone up. And I, I'm not opposed to that maybe in the future, but you gotta find funding for it, and you gotta find people for it. Um, so, and I, I've got something else that I'm waiting for. There's another city that I believe is going to be building or adding on, so that might be an option for us. Uh, municipality that we used in the past to shelter our animals, so.
Allen Park got rid of their shelter.
Yeah, see, that's what I, that's what I'm saying, but they're, you know, that's one of the cities we used to use in the past. Actually, when I was annual officer, we used to use this municipality. So I'm not sure if that's gonna pan out, but,
And we did tailor too for a while.
Yeah, that's, I didn't want to say it, but that's, that's who I was referring to, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it, Director, yep.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other discussion items on this? All right, hearing none? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Uh, next item on the agenda is Third Amendment Sublease Agreement, Wayne County Prosecutor's Office.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council rescind City Council motion twenty-two, three, eight, four, and approve the revised Third Amendment Sublease Agreement between the city and Wayne County. In addition, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city, as outlined in eight dash E.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Ahmad and seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion on that? Hearing none? Oh, and, and by the way, um, by the way, for those in the audience and on Zoom, um, what this sublease is for is not like a huge part, uh, as you know, we have some, a little bit of extra space in our court system and in the police department, and this is for a small room, I think it's, police chief, what is it, like something ten by twelve or something like that? It's a very, very small room. And it's also good for, you know, our city to continue to have good working relationship with other, uh, departments like this, so I, I think it's a win-win for everybody. It's, again, a very small office that they use.
It's like a cell, jail.
Huh?
It's like a jail cell.
Oh, it's like that, but, okay. All right, um, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda, under reports from city officials, we have City Clerk Senior Annual Liquor License Review.
Councilor Chair.
Okay, Councilman Coniston?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council receive note and file the twenty twenty-three liquor license review and direct our corporation council to contact and draft a letter to businesses with deficiencies. And if that department has cited the deficiency and it has not already taken care of it, requesting deficiency shall be addressed within thirty days of the letter the licensee receives, as outlined in nine A.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Coniston and seconded by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion on that?
Mr. Chair.
I have a couple, yes, go ahead.
I would just add that I've met with the city clerk, we've already taken, there were only three businesses that,
Three, correct.
Issues, and I got confirmation from the last business today that they've taken care of their bills. The other one was an inspection with the fire department, and they've secured a water system, and the fire department is, uh, scheduled to walk through. Um, the other issue, maybe one,
They've already finished that. The fire was in today, yesterday or today, so thank you, and they have complied.
So all the businesses have complied, there's no need for me to write any letter, but I did take, uh, the clerk's, um, guidance, and we did reach out and speak to all the businesses.
Okay. And for those in the audience and on Zoom, uh, you know, the city's taking a stand, you know, we'll work with people, but at the same time, people are behind on their bills, not working with any of the city directors or departments as far as making sure their bills are either paid on time or some sort of a payment plan, then you do risk not getting your license renewed, whether it's a liquor license or a business license. Okay, so all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is Building and Engineering Director Wotland rezoning parcels from Office O to Commercial Mixed Use CX.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the rezoning of the following four parcels, refers, referred to as six, four, two, eight, North Inglewood, from Office O to Commercial Mixed Use CX, three, three, dash, zero, one, two, dash, zero, one, dash, zero, zero, two, one, dash, three, zero, six. Uh, another one, three, thirty-three, is zero, one, two, zero, one, zero, zero, two, one, three, zero, seven. Thirty-three, zero, one, two, zero, one, zero, zero, two, one, three, oh, eight. Thirty-three, zero, one, two, zero, one, zero, zero, two, one, three, oh, nine, as outlined in nine B.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion on that? Okay, hearing none? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item nine C, City Engineer Dip, Lower Rouge C S O L forty-two sewer separation project, scope modification.
Councilor Chair.
Okay, Councilman Coniston?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the Lower Rouge C S O L forty-two sewer separation project scope modification contract change order number two for one million, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars. In addition, authorize the mayor and the comptroller or the clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payments from account number five, nine, two, dash, five, three, seven, nine, eight, one, zero, zero, five, and purchase order twenty-two, dash, five, three, five, as outlined in nine C.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Coniston, seconded by Councilman Bedun. Any discussion on that?
Councilor Chair.
Uh, Councilman Muscat?
Just want to let everybody know, this money's coming from the bond that we received, uh, that we approved, uh, four, five years ago for this project. Um, and, uh, just to let you know, there's, and there's still money left in that bond, just so everybody knows this. We had a, a meeting on this, and it was all explained to us on why and how, and why we should go this way, because it'll cost us in the long run if we tear up this, if we don't tear up the street, we're gonna end up with other problems.
Correct. Councilor Chair. Uh, Councilman Bedun and Councilman Ahmad.
And so, yeah, I would just kind of reiterate our meeting and what was happening. As we were drilling under, we were running into big boulders, it was costing us more money. We don't know what could potentially happen. Uh, it could, it might cost us one point five, might even cost us two million dollars. We don't know what the expense is, because we're kind of digging, and as we're going, we're hitting into boulders, pulling it out, having to rip out the boulder. So ultimately, what this project is gonna do is going to rip out the entire ground, uh, new concrete, and then we're gonna also fix the broken plumbing, so you don't have as many water main breaks in the area.
Exactly.
And then brand-new pavement, correct?
Correct. So in addition to preventing delays, which is, you know, and, and, and potential cost. So what this will do to us is that we open cut Beach Daily, we will access the pipes to replace, the intention behind this project is the Eagle mandated the separation of the sewers, sanitary from storm. So that's what, we will continue to do that, but since the pavement in that location is also beyond its useful life, and we also have issues with water mains breaking constantly, they're old and beyond useful life. If we open cut, this now allows me to go in and replace water mains and replace pavement in addition to the original work. So that's the change, and that's, that's the recommendation.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Council Chair.
You have something to say?
Yeah, thank you, Councilor.
Just make sure, just in case, Wade Trump, Director, do you have anything to say on that, add on that?
I, I agree with, with Mr. Dip as well.
Okay. Councilman Ahmad?
Thank you, Councilor. I'm just ready to approve this, just if you can address the complaint that we heard today with our neighbors.
Yeah, so, so first, I, you know, the nature of these projects...
Talk into the mic, please.
So first, I'd like to say, the nature of these projects, they are an inconvenience for certain, for both the residents and the businesses. What we try to do is minimize the impact that we have and create, you know, create a situation where it's, it's as the least problems as possible during the course of the project. This project was, is, is, was planned as a two-year project. Uh, in August, at the start of the project, we distributed flyers to the entire project area. We met with the city of Ingerston, they were, they attended our pre-construction meeting as well. They were informed of the project, uh, and we also, the project was advertised on the city of Dearborn Heights website as well. And so, we entered into the project, uh, started in August, had the issues with the boulders, ceased work in late October, came back towards the end of November and began water main work. And then in February, um, so there was other, there was other complaints internally with residents that we addressed as we went. In February, uh, the, the apartment complex reached out, and I spoke with their attorney. They expressed concern with, uh, with access to their site, and they wanted some additional signage placed, so we, we placed the signage. And, and then, so what happened is, we continued to do the work, we thought we were good with, with keeping them, uh, happy. And then with the, with the incorporation of this change order, uh, for consideration, we spoke with them about, in prep for this work, in, in hopes that you guys would approve it. That's why they're here today, uh, is because of, we met with them and, and informed them of the meeting, uh, informed them of the impacts of the project moving forward. We asked them for use of their, um, they have a secondary entrance that's blocked off of Avondale. So for ease of construction, we asked that if we could use that entrance and then close down Beach Daily entirely. And that's where we've been negotiating back and forth, uh, with them. And at this time, they don't want to give us access through, through Avondale. And they've, I think they've taken the stance that the, the impact to the business has caused a loss in rev, revenue, and they, it's my understanding, they want to be compensated for, for that loss. And so I'm not sure what that loss is, but they have indicated to us that through word of mouth, they requested $46,000 a month.
I would just, I would just stop any further discussion. If this is going to go into litigation, I think we can do it privately in some issue. And this, this project is a mandated project by Eagle, correct?
It is, yes.
I'd like to add one more thing, though. If we do not move on with this change order and leave the work separate, there will be additional inconveniences when we go do the pavement separately and come back and do the water main separately. So instead of doing it all at one time, we come back, because the pavement is beyond its useful life. So if I don't do this, I will have to come back and do pavement, and I have to come back and do water main, so that the impact will be, will be a lot longer. It'll be additional projects taking place in the same location.
Okay. Councilman, go ahead.
Council Chair, thank you. I, from whatever I just heard right now, I'd like to make, make a motion to table this until maybe we discuss it with the corporate counsel.
Shit.
We had a study session on this, and I don't think we're going to accomplish anything. If they want to do anything, that's up to them to do. I think you've seen the study session, the presentation that we had.
Damn it.
Um, I think you have enough information to move forward, because time is of the essence.
And, and I just want to add one more.
And it's mandated by the state.
So we have a mandate, timeline and cost, and if I don't do this...
And we're also getting a discount on the concrete, from what you last told us, right?
Right. And if I don't do it now, I'm, I'm, I will not make the schedule.
Okay.
Okay. Let's put this to...
Is corporate counsel's recommendation to move forward with voting on it today?
Yes, it's my, thank you.
Okay. Let's go ahead and put this to vote. Uh, all in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is Item B, Comptroller King Fund Transfer. Now, on that one, um, oh, no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Council Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the transfer of American Rescue Act Plan, ARPA Recovery Funds in the amount of $7,842,769 from the ARPA Fund to the General Fund, as outlined in nine D.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Coniston and seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Is there any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
Um, Mr. O'Hara, Abdal Haq kind of stole my thunder at the beginning of the meeting. I, I didn't know what amount of money I was going to ask for, uh, but, um, I, I know we're going to vote on this, but, yeah, how are we going to do if I want to make a motion on saving some money for, uh, can we ask the clerk on how she wants me to do that?
You can just change the...
Well, if it's, if it's, if it's out of this money, then that would be something else. But if it's not out of this money, then we can make this first motion and make a new motion.
It would be ARPA money.
I know, but there's more than this, more than this 7.8 million.
Guys, it's very simple. We're going to change from 7.8 to 7.4. That's all you're doing. Still the same amount of money, we're keeping 400,000 to be put.
But I want, I, I, I don't know what the amount is. I'd like to have a study session on that amount, so the administration gets together, so we all, all of us can agree on an amount.
Okay.
I don't want to just throw an amount out there, either A, being too much, or B, not enough.
Or, or what are you, what if you make the amount today 5 million, and then you can come back and discuss the remaining 2.8?
Well, I, I don't want to change this, but if we have a, a, at least a, a study session, so we can come to a, a somewhat of a, a understanding of how much money we need, we can study that, and then we can, I can put something on the agenda to have that approved. Am I out of line here?
Councilor.
Why don't we not discuss the terms of the contract here, but we can take a short recess if you want, decide what you, if you want to go into closed session, put it, and ask for a closed session or a study session.
But I, I don't think it's just a closed session, is that necessary for...
A study session.
Yeah, I just want to clarify something. The 7.842, 769 million, that's a part of the 10 million, of which we used our, we've already used 2.2 million to balance our, our budget. There's still additional funds available, obviously. So keep that in mind, there's still another 14-some million.
Okay, I, I just want to, you know, make my motion...
Which we'll be making decisions on, obviously, at a later date.
So that's why I want to base my, my decision on a dollar amount that we all know is going to be enough, and not having to come back and say, well, we allocated too much money, or we didn't allocate enough. But I definitely want to make something for, for our people, like our police officers, our firefighters, uh, our dispatch people, the people that worked in, uh, in DPW that worked all through, the COVID had had to come to work, they were all under duress at this time. Uh, we, they deserve something.
Hi, I just wanted to, uh, City King, the comptroller. You're welcome. I just wanted to express one thing regarding this. All I'm asking is that it gets put into the general fund, into the fund balance. It does not mean that we're spending it, we're not sent, you will get full, uh, reason for any of that to be spent. All we're doing is moving it into the fund balance, if we're not asking to be spending any of it. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Any amount over 1,500 has to come back to counsel for full approval.
But this would go right into the fund balance, it would not be spent. All I'm asking is that it goes in there really mainly for cash flow issues.
So, 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 hear me out one second.
Go ahead.
So this gets approved, I will still be able to write something up to put money into that fund for the first responders and those from, I'm going to call first responders, even DPW, Water Main Ray, those guys are first responders too, for, for crying out loud. So I'll be able to do that and still come out of this 7,842?
Yes.
Okay, uh, and, and this is going to be on the record here today, so we can put it on the agenda for two weeks from now, and that way we won't cause any problems here tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion items on this? Okay, hearing none. Uh, motion made by Councilman Coniston, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is Comptroller King Budget Amendments. I do got to tell you guys, there's been a change, she gave us an additional document today, and it's been passed out, so before you make the motion, I'd like to have her at least just, uh, explain to the council members, because we just received it, the change, so that at least they're aware before they make a vote on this. Go ahead, Councilor.
Uh, thank you. Actually, it was just a typo. Uh, if you look at the account 101335726 under fringe benefits, I'm requesting that we move 400,000 out of that account, and actually, the budget, the amended budget, I had actually taken out 800,000. So it's just a matter that the amount there was incorrect, it should be 2,300, 2,310,838, which would be the new amended budget, because I'm only taking out 400,000.
Okay. But what I'm looking at, and the one that was in the packet in this is the same as the number that you mentioned.
The one that you have is the same? Because the one that fell out isn't.
Well, okay, so, so what it should be, so again, it's on 101335726000.
That's correct.
The one that was in the original packet, the fringe benefits were 2710838, which is what this one is. And so you're saying it's on amended, amended budget is the wrong amount that was in there, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So the amended, just for those that are not, it's right here. So the amended amount that was in there is 1.910 million, the correct amount should have been 2,310,838, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and then the 400,000 was correct on both of them. Okay.
That's correct.
Right here.
I know.
1.9?
I see the 1.9.
And right here, 27726.
It should have only been taking out 400,000, and it accidentally took out 800,000.
Okay, I see it. Thank you.
Okay.
I just wanted to take one other minute, if I could, and introduce my new accountant. His name is Max Baydun. I just wanted to, you want to come up here and say hello?
What's his name?
Max Baydun.
Wow, what am I...
Yes, he has the same last name.
Does he have family with you, or? I just want to, for the record, I don't know Mr. Baydun, Baydun's a real big last name, but he spells it B-A-Y, and then he spells it correctly. He spells it D-E-Y.
He does, he does.
That is weird.
All right. Um, all right, so motion by, uh, Coniston, I'm sorry, just want to make sure we have the correct one.
No, we didn't do it.
No, we didn't do it, yeah, okay. So now, go ahead, anybody want to make this motion?
Go ahead, Council Chair.
Item E.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the budget amended, amendment for the 2022, 2023 fiscal year general fund is outlined, and the revised backup provided from item nine E.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Baydun, seconded by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion on that? Very good. Hearing none, all in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is Item F, DPW Director Conrad.
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase of payment of 35 red maple trees and five oak trees from Troy Clog Landscaping Associates LLC for the total of $17,800. In addition, authorize the mayor, comptroller, or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment. Funds for this purchase will be transferred from Highway Contractual Services Account 101000243440 to the Tree Removal Permit Fund to the Tree Planting 101000283440, as item nine F.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat and seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Uh, Councilman Muscat, first.
Uh, this is a great idea, but I'd like to know why we're doing oak trees, since they grow real big and, uh, can uproot, uh, the sidewalks and get into power lines. Thinking we stuck with all red maples, it would be a better ideal. Um, but oak trees really...
Robert Conrad, Director, DPW, we're going to have to withdraw that, that's not this year's, uh, this year's bid's going to United, so somehow the council motion from last year got put up.
Oh, so we want to remove this?
Yes. I mean, I, yeah, I mean, it's, it's totally wrong, there's only 30 trees going in, um, it's with United, so somehow, you know, that's not the council motion that I submitted.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Council Chair. I move that we, we amend the...
We'll, we'll resubmit it for the next meeting.
Table it, table it. Refer back to, refer this back to administration.
Support.
You can amend it to refer it back to administration.
Support. Motion made by Councilman Muscat to refer back to administration, seconded by Councilman Baydun. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda...
Council Chair, before we move forward, never mind.
All right. I'll, I'll, I'll call, I'll call. Next item on the agenda is Item G, Police Chief Hart, Permission to Increase Credit Limit.
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the increase of the police department's petty cash credit card line to 30,000, as outlined in nine G.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
All right, Councilwoman first, and then you're next.
As was stated earlier by people in the audience and on Zoom, I think it would start a bad precedent if we give it to the chief, even though I love you guys dearly, um, because all the others would want money too. So I really don't see it being fair to the others, if this, if he gets special.
Okay. Um, I, I, I'd just like to make a quick comment. Obviously, needless to say, we all support and love our police department, as I do, and, and I commend all police departments and fire departments for, for putting their lives on the line. The thing that I would like to see is maybe instead of a credit limit, maybe switch it it to the American Express card that is available and it is up to twenty-five thousand dollars. And I spoke with the treasurer on that and, um, this was one of her recommendations also, in addition to myself thinking about it. Before you go, Chief, if you don't mind, there was somebody else that wanted to comment? Go ahead, Council-
Quickly, isn't some of this, sometimes for informants and so forth, you need cash. You have to have cash.
Yeah, so it's kinda two different, two separate issues there. I mean, it's a great question, but first of all, it's not a popularity contest. I thick skin, right? So I appreciate that very much. I have a fourteen point eight million dollar budget. If this is approved by council or whatever you approve, we are simply, I'm gonna write a very stringent policy on this and when we can and can't use it. I don't wanna violate your trust. I've had a P card most of my leadership times, whether it was at the city of Novi or the city of Celine, we've had P cards, right? When we book training and sometimes when we do training out of state, you talk about airfare, you talk about the cost of the training class, right? We quickly get to our limit and it really kinda impedes us. So I'm just trying to find a way for us to work together, for me to not go out and spend money on new items, right? I only wanna use this for items that you have budgeted, uh, for us at the police department to do, uh, work and keep our community safe. So it's not that I'm asking, uh, for anything really, uh, additional to our budget, but it's just a way to improve our operations and make us more efficient. That's all it is. Whether it's a American Express, it's a little bit harder to deal with, but it is what it is. And the chief's not gonna keep it in his wallet, right? To get mixed up with his other credit cards. So it's something that we will cherish and we will not violate your trust on. Uh, I would fully anticipate everybody in this room would be watching the bills and if I'm doing things that I shouldn't be doing, I should be called out on it, right? So, um, that's kinda where I'm coming from on this.
I call you.
So the, so this one, just for full disclosure, this one's no reflection on you personally, obviously.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's just with any-
This is impersonal, yeah.
You know, I'm, I'm just trying to get concerned with any department having access to this amount of money. And also, you wanna be fair to all departments, so I, I, I can't make it, and I'm just speaking for myself, where, okay, I trust the police, but I don't trust the X Y Z department. And, you know, I trust the police, but I don't trust the fire department, et cetera, et cetera. That's, that's a bigger concern I've got.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate that, but the reality is, is that, again, my, you trust me with a fourteen point eight million dollar budget, right? That's a big budget. And you tell me that I have to keep within that budget, right? So that's all we're asking for here is a way to spend that budgeted money and it's still gonna be supervised, it's still something that you're gonna have to approve the payments on at a certain time and obviously call me out on if there's something there that shouldn't be in there. So that's all I'm asking and nothing personal. It's, it's not a popularity contest. I'm not trying to, the treasurer, the comptroller.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you, and, and Chief, thank you so much for that and, and we want you to know, every single person on here from the administration, I think to council, to the clerk's office, appreciate it, would never undermine your, uh, trust, but, you know, there might be a day where I'm not up here or one of us or yourself.
Sure.
And so we have to also make sure that we are protecting the residents for, you know, for times to come, for when my son's living in, in grown and living in the city. And so realistically, it's, it's not on you and that's where I personally stand on it. Secondly, I have a fiduciary duty to the city. Thirdly, I'm not always in city hall, where like I have a day-to-day nine to five, he has a nine to five, almost every single one of us have a nine to five. So realistically, looking into it, and again, it's not you. We trust you on the fourteen point eight million dollars. Our job is running on, on here is to be fiscally responsible, is to make sure that we have a, a budget that's, you know, aligned. And so if you have fourteen point eight or fourteen point nine, we have, I don't think any of us on here or in the past have ever said no to police and fire. Uh, but, you know, giving away a, a P card at a limit of thirty, thirty thousand, I believe the charter says fifteen hundred. So then we'd be in violation of our charter. And secondly, um, you know, thirty thousand dollars is a little excessive. I know, I spoke with the council chair on this, he told me about the twenty-five thousand dollar AMEX. I know that we've done that with the former police chief in the past. I'm all for that, like, I'm okay if you have to book a trip to get, and you gotta spend twenty-five thousand dollars and book rooms and hotels and flights, I'm for that. But, you know, to leave a P card at thirty thousand and, you know, how often are we really, and I would never wanna look and say, well, I wanna see this, right? Let's FOIA this or let's look into this. Look, at the end of the day, we trust you. All we're asking is that it comes before council. Now, I'm also hearing through the grapevines that there could potentially be, uh, some mismanagement between the comptroller and the treasurer's office. Again, I don't know, this could be speculation, but if there are things that we have approved and that the chief or the administration have requested for and they're not being paid, well, then, you know, we need to get to the bottom of that. Because if council approved it, then it needs to, and whatever it is that's being said needs to be paid. Um, so, you know, that's aside from, you know, the discussion with the chief, but I'm hearing that things are not being paid. I don't know where that's going back and forth, but we, as a community, we as a body here approve something, we are expecting it to be paid. Uh, thank you so much, Council Chair.
Okay. Council McCord.
Thank you, Council Chair. Briefly, um, as the chief said, fourteen and a half million dollars. If anyone remembers, it was a year or two years ago, there was a murder here and the person drove all the way to, it was a southern state and the money had to be allocated to, you know, fly down there. Ammunition, emergency charges, and it's a point well taken for me. So that means petty cash, it's not really cash, it's not sitting in the safe, but, uh, you know, available in an emergency in a, um, I was thirty years ago, court officer in La Vona, they were a big department and they had a lot of, uh, they had a big hotel there, a lot of people fly in from here or there, big bus with, uh, it wasn't Draino, but it was another interfund. And so, sounds like a lot of money and it is. It's more than some people make in a year, but fourteen and a half million to have, you know, uh, that amount and it's gonna, it's not gonna be, you're not gonna go and buy candy at the store and, and not report it or dinner at the bar. Um, that's number one. Number two, and quickly, uh, when I was in the legislature, I had at Kim Worthy's request, Wayne County Prosecutor Kim Worthy, that department is the busiest prosecutor's office in the state of Michigan. They were very strapped for cash and when they had to take something up on appeal or order a transcript, they were on big cases that went on for years, taking money out of their own pocket. So I introduced a bill, again, at Wayne County Prosecutor's, Kim Worthy's request, to not have the prosecutor's office have to pay like a thousand dollars on an appeal because it's one hand of government to the other. The head of the Court of Appeals said, well, that's a clerk, it was a fight over, uh, who was in charge and it, and it wasn't allowed and then later, uh, the, the ball got dropped. So it's, it's, if, it sounds like a lot of money, if the chief says it's gonna be accounted for, it's a matter of getting the job done efficiently.
Okay. Council Chair, one more, one more time. We'll be looking at all of these bills anyway. Once, once he spends money, it, we're, we're gonna get a sheet on this and we're gonna, just like the AMEX credit card, we're gonna, if we read our packet and you go through it, you should be able to pick out, hey, this doesn't look good to me. I'm gonna find out about it. It's that easy to do.
Yeah, and just so you know, I mean, you've reimbursed me on my personal credit card before and it's caused me grief because Mrs. Chief looks at, looks at the bill and says, when were you, when were you at Bavarian Inn, right? For, and I booked, used my card to book, uh, some training for our records clerks and I just didn't tell my wife. The next thing I know, I'm sitting at my desk and I get a text that says, our credit card's been compromised unless you were at Frankenmuth with somebody, right?
It wasn't a hotel room, was it?
Yes, it was. So-
Chicken, chicken soup.
Well, I'll tell you what.
That's the reason for this whole thing. I'll tell you what, no wonder you kinda lost a little bit here.
So, so when we, so then that, that, there's a whole cascade, right? Because now the chief's credit card gets canceled, now all of my, you know, monthly bills that are on that credit card, they slowly start coming in as non-payment, yada, yada. It just causes so much grief, right? If that's what I have to do to run the police department, so be it, right? But i- if you wanna reduce the amount, whatever it is, we just wanna be efficient. And, and I'm with you, I'm, uh, with the fiduciary responsibility, right? I have that responsibility to you, you have it to the community and, and we're not looking to go on a spending spree here.
Otherwise, you'd have to use cash. So let's put this to a vote. Um, all in favor, please state- I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Sorry, I apologize, my fault.
We talked about that.
And I owe you, I owe you an apology because-
Which one?
Earlier today, oh, I'm sorry, uh, the treasurer. Because earlier today, I said, let's have you comment during the public, I'm sorry, during the particular one.
Yeah.
And then I allowed the Chief of Staff, Mariana, to go, which I pre-agreed to her previously, but my apologies.
Oh, no, that's all right. And, um, thank you, Chief Hart. Uh, just so you can let your wife know, you won't be using hopefully your personal credit card, because that's not a big no-no with the auditors, right? They get us every time. But I wanted to shed some light, first of all, and then talk about what we're gonna talk about, real quick. The AMEX card, there, there is one, there was one. You all know that. When I became treasurer, you didn't get reports, I started sending you reports. We even put it on the council under current claims. Unfortunately, what that does is it slows down getting the payment to them and we were late every month with the card being paid. Um, but it did exist and what happened to it is when there was a change of command and when I went to retrieve that card, I need the card back, I need account for the card, it couldn't be produced, so I reported it missing, okay? So that's the story on the AMEX card. As you all know, I made that recommendation about you can reissue the card. Um, again, if that's a council's choice, you have that in writing from me that I provided yesterday. So, but what I like, for us to talk about briefly, because I agree, we're getting flagged on the process.
Yes.
Okay, this is an issue. We agree to that. It's not blaming somebody, we have to work together, but remember your process when you start, it starts with a department getting the invoice, then it has to be put on the current claim, if it's over a certain dollar amount, for council approval. Then it goes to accounts payable. Once accounts payable clerk processes it, issues a check, the check run, it now has the comptroller has, you have to review that, correct? When you review it, it comes to me after you sign them, that's usually about Thursday afternoon. I come in on Fridays, review all, I have to make sure the general ledgers are correct, like you do. Like the general ledgers are correct, the invoices are correct, everything is correct and not exhausted and we have the funds available. And then I can sign it, I'm doing this on Friday, and when do I get it back to you?
Monday.
Monday morning by nine AM. That is your process. Now, if you're questioning the process is too slow or it's this or it's that-
Yeah.
And yeah, it probably is.
It is.
It probably is. So that's what we need, I think we agree. Will you take a look at it?
We definitely agree to that and also I have been short-staffed and had quite a bit of turnaround in my accounting department, which has caused a little bit of a slack. Also, I do want to reiterate that is one of the reasons why we want ACH payments to be started and that will eliminate a lot of this.
That was gonna be my-
And finally, there is, there is one other thing that is an issue and it has to do with when the mailing, the mail comes in and it gets opened by the mail, actually, actually from the water department. We also have a turnaround in that department, so people are opening the mail not knowing who gets what and who actually has to approve it. So sometimes it does get lost, it does get overlooked, it does get, you know, put in someone's box and they didn't even know about it and then it comes back to me saying, that's not mine, I, I shouldn't have to approve that. So we are working to change the process and that's one of the reasons why I had hired my accountant. He is working on, on new processes and procedures and we're also, uh, working on getting all of the invoices scanned in into a shared drive so that we don't have this paper going back and forth. So yes, it has been an issue, however, we are working to fix that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Was there a compromise suggested of twenty-five thousand or did I not hear right?
No.
No. No compromise. I apologize.
Okay. So motion made by Councilman Muscat and seconded by Councilman Constance. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
No. Madam Clerk?
Dave Abdallah.
No.
Hassan Ahmad.
Yes.
Moby Dun.
No.
Nancy Breyer?
No.
Robert Constance?
Yes.
And Ray Muscat?
Yes.
Give me now a tie, that means the motion fails. You don't have a majority.
Okay. Motion fails. Next item on the agenda is Police Chief Hart.
Does the motion pass? Isn't it even? Does the motion pass or?
Oh, right, okay. Got you. Okay, next item on the agenda is Police Chief Hart, two thousand twenty-two Justice Assistant Grant.
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council- Resent the, uh, city council motion twenty-two dash four two two and accept the United States Department of Justice Grant, twenty twenty-two Justice Assistance Grant, JAG, in the amount of seventeen thousand six hundred and nine dollars and fifty cents. In addition, authorize the mayor to sign the required documentation on behalf of the city as outlined in nine H.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Constance, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried.
Council Chair.
Yes, Council Chair.
I'm reconsidering it, would like to say yes on item G.
I have to make a new motion then.
Are we allowed to do that?
Yeah, we can do that.
You can, you can do it one of two ways, either during the next meeting when we're-
Amend the motion.
Wait, guys, guys, nobody from the audience, please. You could either, you could go back and amend the motion, make sure the clerk, or-
Suspend the minutes.
Suspend the rules, right. Or during the next minutes, Madam Clerk, if we, I know we've done that in the past, during the next meeting, when we have the next council meeting and we're reading the minutes, they can change it by then.
You could do it now, you could suspend it now, Madam Clerk.
Okay.
Council Chair, move to suspend the, our, our rules on, on making motion here.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Muscat to suspend the rules, supported by Councilman Constance. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. And now we're gonna go back to the, um, item nine G. Nine G. Um, the motion was made- Item nine G, motion was made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by, uh, Councilman Constance. All in favor, please, okay.
Are you doing a new motion or are you reconsidering the old motion?
Just reconsidering her vote.
Okay, so I'm gonna make the motion. I move, the motion, I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the increase of the police department's petty cash credit limit line to thirty thousand as outlined in nine G.
Support. And seconded by Constance. Madam Clerk, you wanna take roll call, please?
Dave Abdallah.
Yes. I'm sorry. No.
We'll, we'll get it right.
Okay. Dave Abdallah.
No.
Hassan Ahmad.
Yes.
Moby Dun.
No.
Nancy Breyer.
Yes.
Robert Constance.
Yes.
And Ray Muscat.
Yes.
Motion carries fourteen.
Okay, motion carried. Next item on the agenda, uh, we're very finished, seven, nine H, motion carried. Okay. The next item on the agenda is item eleven. Are we good? Ma'am clerk? Okay. Next item on agenda is item 11A, Mayor Bazey, first reading of the proposed ordinance H2301, Amendment Section 6, Article 97, unlawful ground feeding.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council move that proposed ordinance H-23-01, an ordinance of the City of Dearborn Heights, provided that code of, in the Code of Ordinances, City of Dearborn Heights be amended by amending Section 8, 6.97 concerning the unlawful feeding of pigeons, gulls, doves, to include an amendment to address unlawful ground feeding, unlawful feeding of feral cats or dogs and the unlawful feeding of pigeons, gulls, and doves be considered and read for the first time as outlined in 11A.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Constant, seconded by Councilman Muscat, any discussion on that?
Counselor Chair.
Uh, go ahead, Councilman.
I know this is one that I, I thought I was speaking about on earlier, I spoke with Mrs. Lisa Alloway earlier on this and, and her team and I know that they've been kind of going back and forth with this and I know Bunker has been working alongside with them and it was Bunker's idea and they agreed, if we change a little bit of the verbiage and maybe our Corporation Council can kind of speak on it, remind me what it was, it was to approve rather than unapprove.
Unapproved.
Any unapproved, correct, any unapproved feeding of feral cats or dogs shall be, I put shall be considered unlawful, so the term is unapproved. Humane society has a program that will train people how to feed animals, not to throw them in the front of the yard or throw them on the street or things like that and the program's a short program. We would add the language that, I received a letter yesterday and reviewed it with Director Dishram on. We would also, and it would be subject to his approval as well, but we would add that language and that verbiage in that was mentioned.
Could we have that new verbiage?
Sorry?
Could we have the new verbiage?
So you're gonna have Corporation Council, you're gonna have the?
Yes, this is the first reading of it here.
On the second reading, you're gonna have the amendment?
Yes, I will put it in and I will send an email out to.
I, I'm just speaking for myself and I've, and I've read a lot on this and I've talked to multiple people who are involved with this, I've talked with the ordinance department, et cetera, et cetera, and call me a little, I don't know, too soft-hearted, I just cannot be personally involved with any type of ordinance that stops the feeding of a hungry cat, a hungry dog, I, I just, my brain is just, and I talked for a long time with Director Dishroom, I've talked with Officer Bunker before, you know, I don't know, since I was a little kid, you feed the animals as much as you can, I, I just can't comprehend in my brain any type of hungry animal and not feeding it because of an ordinance, so I for one, I, I just can't, in my heart of hearts, I've had a hard time with this director, I can't in my heart of heart vote yes on something like this, so personally, I'm not gonna go in that direction. Councilman, go ahead.
I, too, I'm a big animal lover, I, I love, and I've always had pets in my life and I, I don't like seeing pets suffer, but as we feed these other animals, we also feed into the population of rodents, okay, and a possum is a rodent, even squirrels are rodents, they're, it's a rat with a furry tail, let's just face it, and people feed them. I personally quit feeding, had a bird feeder, I quit doing that because of the ground feed and I, I saw raccoons and skunks and they come to hurt my animal and so I quit feeding them and so that's what I'm worried about, all the people that call, the rest of the citizens that call me and say they got a rodent problem at their house. So we got one on one hand and then we got the other hand, what do we do? So I'm in favor of this just so we can get rid of the rodent population.
Counselor Chair.
Well, let the director speak first, go ahead, director.
Go ahead.
And for those in the audience, I apologize, but the public comments on agenda items was earlier, so I apologize for that. I'm sorry, ma'am. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Counselor Chair, I just wanted to reiterate, I just had the city clerk, Lynn Senior, pass out, just one example of many that we have, and let me start out by saying it was never the intent to target cats, Rob Bunker had mentioned that earlier in the meeting, it was never the intent. Unfortunately, we have other issues that come up and if you look at these pictures, you can see, the first picture is a deer eating food that is placed in the front yard, this is in our city, that is a deer. It's hard to see, I, listen, I have about five or six 30 or 45 second clips from this location in addition to pictures, the second one's a picture of food on a plate in the rear yard, same thing, the last one is a squirrel being fed in the rear yard and this is just the tip of the iceberg. Again, it was never the intent to target cats and/or dogs per se, the idea was to get something that we could use to enforce these issues because we didn't have anything in, in writing that would allow us to prevent stuff like this from happening. The pictures you're seeing here, the neighbor is beside himself, he has geese, there's video with geese in the front yard, like three or four gathering geese, skunks, opossums, deer, squirrels, raccoon, yeah, everything, you name it, any land-roving creature, that was the intent, so. I mean, I, I don't know, we've gone over this.
The only concern I have, director, is, I'm sorry, councilman, is, we had the meetings in the past and I know we spoke with a couple of those, if you want to come, animal activists, people that cared about animals, as I know you do care, obviously, and I know we put together some sort of general meetings, you guys were gonna be meeting and I spoke with you a couple times, I said you're meeting, and I know they were all in on this and honestly, presumptively, on my end, everything's going good, because what we didn't want to do is do anything inhumane, I, I just, again, my brain can't comprehend a cat walking up to my, and it happened, it's walked up to my house, I'm saying it publicly, so I guess I'll get arrested for this, but a cat walked up to my back porch, a very skinny cat and you could tell it was looking for food.
I'll write you a ticket after.
Yeah, I know, I, I couldn't, I couldn't have the heart to just not throw some food there and when I gave it food, obviously it ate, my brain's just not, I, I, I don't know, I'm having a hard time.
Counselor Chair, look, you know, I know this is a tough situation, because I'm gonna be honest with you, Counselor Chair, my neighbor, for the residents, I want you to see it, my neighbor put out a bunch of chicken nuggets and fries, you're not feeding the cat, okay? I'm just being honest, you're feeding, you're feeding rodents, you're feeding opossums and so I can, I see where the director's coming with this, because like, this, this is unnecessary, like this is just unacceptable, I swear, like I would be so upset, especially if I saw a possum eating chicken nuggets, old french fries and it looks like some roasted beans, like, no cat is gonna eat that.
It was too fast.
I know, I'm starving.
I know.
It's okay, but, but we're almost done, that's the good news, we're almost done. Counselor Chair, so like really, you know, really, if we can send this back, or not send it back, but go to our second reading and be okay to feed, properly feed, and I mean properly feed, like if you're giving a cat, cat food, that's one thing, but if you're giving, you know, pigeons french fries and rodents french fries, I'm sorry, you know, like you really, that's unacceptable.
There's no problem, a lot of people are uneducated in regards to the feeding process.
Okay. Ma'am, I'm sorry, we came. So what I'm, what I'm gonna ask is here, Counselor Chair, is that maybe we could put an ordinance together that says, look, if you're feeding a cat, cat food, that's fine, you're feeding a dog, dog food, that's fine, you're putting out rice, because like, I'm not gonna lie to you guys, my neighbor one time took up old rice and threw it on his grass, not Bulldog, but somebody else, and, and it was, I walked by it, I said, there's, there's, there's really, I mean pigeons and, you know, rats and mice, everyone was around it and I was so, I was so disturbed by it, I don't even know if any cats came and ate rice, but, you know, that would be unacceptable, so maybe if we had an ordinance that came out and, you know, really set it up so that if you're feeding a cat, cat food, you're feeding a dog, dog food, you won't be ticketed, you're putting out, you know, this kind of, you're putting out chicken nuggets, old chicken nuggets that are molded, you're gonna get ticketed.
Right, and that's what Corporation Council, for you and I, had referred back to, the change in the language, to manage that aspect of it, I guess, maybe everybody missed that, I don't know, I mean, I know nobody heard it earlier, because he just brought it up, but I, I think there is room to work on this, but the problem is, is that sometimes you have people that aren't following the rules, if they go through all the training, they're not doing things properly, and it's gonna happen, I'm telling you right now, it's gonna happen. And it happens, and we have people that are feeding cats and they're upset about it, you know, people are throwing food on the ground, all this stuff is happening and you can clearly see that they're being, not only cats are being fed, again, that was a catalyst for this ordinance, is other animals that are being fed, it looks like a nature preserve, I'm telling you, I've never, I've never seen anything like that.
Yeah.
I've never seen so many different land-roving animals gather in one, at one location in my life, they should start charging admission.
Okay.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
Thank you, Counselor Chair, I also received many calls, I think the issue here, that activists, they're, they're having a hard time with the second part of the paragraph where it says, shall be unlawful for any person to feed any feral, any feral cats or dogs by any means, which means, whatever, it's approved or unapproved, they're not supposed to feed them. So the second part is the issue here, so if we can take off the second part and just keep the first part, the unapproved feeding of feral cats or dogs, it's prohibited, but the second part, I mean, from my understanding, seems like whether you do it the right way or the wrong way, you're not supposed to do it.
Unapproved.
So, so this is the part that I think.
When you say unapproved, you're saying that there is a way to definitely feed, yeah, you don't want someone, like, your, your ordinance office has said, people have bought rotisserie chickens and thrown them in the backyard.
Well, this is unapproved.
You know, but it attracts rats and it attracts other things, we get 12, 12 calls a day about rodent issues, so I think that how, you can balance, you're right, we can balance it and we'll work with, with them and I, I appreciate the input that was sent forward to me yesterday and we've incorporated it and we will review it with people who've sent us the emails.
Okay, okay, so let's go ahead and take this to a vote, motion by, will you all say it, councilman?
Yes.
So, motion by Councilman Constant, seconded by Councilman Muscat, all in favor, please state aye.
No.
Those opposed?
No.
Ma'am clerk?
Dave Abdallah?
No.
Hassan Ahmad?
No.
Moby Dun?
No.
Nancy Brier?
No.
Robert Constant?
Yes.
And Ray Muscat?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Okay, fails, thank you very much. What I would suggest, you know, directors, maybe you could get together with some of the ladies and some gentlemen that are very involved with this, maybe put together a sec, just a little revised amendment.
As a parliamentary issue, we're not voting on, I thought it was just for a first reading.
Right.
Are we taking a vote on it to, to have a second reading?
This can be, this can be amended.
Yeah, the clerk had it here for a vote.
Right, we didn't want it for a vote, we wanted to have it just, just the first reading, we've gotten the input, so we would need to set it for a second reading, then after the second reading and we have both parties together, then I think it will be eligible for a vote.
They have it in the motions here to be voted on.
I think, yeah.
Okay. So, ma'am clerk?
Considered read for the first time, but they're not happy with it, so possibly maybe you can refer it back since it was defeated, or that's?
Yeah, it's everyone's.
And then we bring it forward as a first reading again.
Right, exactly.
Okay, so.
All right, so.
I don't wanna say the ball back to your court, you know what I mean, maybe?
Send it back to administration.
He doesn't wanna do so, I, can I make a motion?
What was that?
I make a motion that, that 11A be referred back to the administration.
Second.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Constant, seconded by Councilman Ahmad, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. At this particular point, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna take about a three, four minute break.
Let's, let's go straight to public council.
Okay, I'll, just three minute break, we're gonna take a three minute break and we'll go ahead and get started again, for those that are fasting, for those that wanna take a restroom break, whatever it is, thank you.
Stretch for a minute.
I got some green. Stand up.
Okay.
Hold up.
You're welcome, you're, no problem, thank you.
That's it.
Thank you.
Ah, she went, ah.
Recording stopped.
Did he give one, did he take one? It was done.
I don't, I haven't either.
We had dinner.
I'll do it. Comment.
Where you gonna be? Was we in there? Guys, I'll see you tomorrow with that food. Where is that?
Lambajin, my wife.
Shani, who? Top hat. You're laughing. Yeah, that's what I heard on the street, because of me. She made a mahogany? Either one, how are you?
I'm always making tacos, bro, that's the, when my shoes move any place.
Minutes, already? No. No, no, no. Three minutes.
You break out fast.
I just came from Florida today, man.
Nice.
Oh, yeah.
What part?
Fort Lauderdale. I see somebody at the airport, you know?
I hope you're not able to look up stuff on me from Fort Lauderdale to eat.
Didn't have cameras, Victor.
No, it was good. It was bad. All right.
Moby Dun, what are you doing?
All right, Tom McLean, nobody wants to go back, all right, we're going back, hello? That's what you're gonna get people to take a break, an eating break. All right.
I got snacks, bro.
All right.
We could, we could.
All right, next item on that, all right, we're going back, we're going back to the meeting.
Nobody's here.
Councilman?
Ray, you're not even fasting or eating, get in here. You know I'm not fat.
Ray takes a veg of it.
I don't say that or not.
Okay.
You guys forget about what?
Uh huh.
Okay.
All right, next item on the agenda.
Still gotta get.
I know.
We still gotta quorum here. You have a quorum here?
They'll, they'll do it, they're paying more. You have a quorum?
Uh, just wait. All right. Hey, happy birthday. Thank you. Is your birthday today?
No.
It's a belated.
Most was the 27, no, 24? 250.
All right. All right, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for understanding, much, much appreciated. Next item on agenda is item 11B, Building and Engineering Director Watland, first reading of the proposed ordinance.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council, oh, wait a minute, I'm doing it wrong here.
11B.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council refer, refer the first reading of proposed ordinance number H23-02, Section 3664, Taylor, Dearborn Heights Gateway Overlay District to a study session as outlined in 11B.
Second. Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Bedun, any discussion on that? I just want to say a quick statement, this has been a pet peeve of mine, how this thing is being delayed, so I want to commend the administration for moving this thing forward and I also commend, most importantly, the building director, Rick Watland, for just pushing this thing as much as possible, but go ahead, Mayor.
We can't hear.
Put your mic on.
I commend also Mr. Deep, Mr. Deep and also White Trim was working on this and I wanna make a statement also on somebody, again, misinformation on this a few months ago, we're still ahead of Taylor, so I did talk to the mayor of Taylor just a few days ago, right now, this ordinance is going in front of the planning commission, I think next week, then a week or two weeks later, it will go in front of the council for the first reading, so we're ahead of Taylor.
On the Taylor side.
Yes, so Taylor, still, as somebody mentioned earlier, a few months ago, that they were ahead of us, it was a false statement, it was misinforming the residents again, so this, this here is, we're, we're ahead of Taylor with the first reading and they're a few weeks behind us, but the mayor, mayor of Taylor and I had a discussion again this morning, he's looking forward for both cities to do the ordinance so they can stop meeting businesses along the Van Born corridor to see what we can do to work together, both cities to improve that corridor and bring in, attract new businesses to that area.
Okay, I, I, I think this is just an absolutely great venture that we're going on with the city and I'm looking forward to improving Van Born for all the residents, so thank you, Mayor. Yeah, those are discussions on that. Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on agenda is extension of the temporary food uses and licenses at specific locations, resolutions by myself.
Go ahead, read it.
Well, I can't read this, gotta be something else.
Counselor Chair.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman Ahmad?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council further extend the amendment resolution regarding city council approval process for temporary food uses and licenses at specific locations for an additional 180 days as outlined in 11-C.
Second. Okay, motion made by Councilman Ahmad and seconded by Councilman Constant, is there any discussion on that?
Counselor Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
In my travels, I see a lot of these food trucks, I see there was one at the mosque on Ford Road, they're here, and, and the one, there was another one at Sayed.
El Sayed?
Yeah, El Sayed, I didn't know, I, I just could've asked a question, are they licensed to be, you know, have they have their licenses, that's all, so, 'cause I don't know, all of these food truck places, are they all licensed, and that's all I'm trying to find out, who has a license if someone from, I don't know who would give us that information, excuse me, sir, I'm speaking, give us the information of what food trucks are eligible or are approved, so when we go by and see them, we know, hey, they're approved, if I get a phone call from a resident saying, hey, what's this guy doing over here, I could look at my, my list and say, they're approved, they've got their licenses, that's the point I'm trying to make.
Okay, so.
I need to know if they're licensed or not and that's not, no cut.
Yeah, there's about four of them today that will be approved, one of the reasons that, or three, I'm sorry, one of the reasons I've always pushed for this is because during a lot of different holidays throughout the year and sometimes during non-holidays, I would see a random food truck open, a random tent open, a random, just table open, and these were people that were opening up and, and, and giving residents, selling residents food without any type of regulation, either from the city or from the health department, and that's one reason why I've always pushed for this, so that we can have it regulated, monitored, and then make sure that people are going through the process and make sure that they're going through the health department, so that we're not just getting anybody that can open one up, because the way it was in the past, unfortunately, you know, I could walk up tomorrow evening and then just open up a food tent and start selling people food and I could have maybe no hygiene, no plumbing, no electric, et cetera, et cetera, so that's the main reason for this.
Counselor Chair, thank you so much, and I want you to know that the administration and the ordinance office has done a great job on enforcing it, I believe, they were going around, they gave, I think about, what is it, Mayor, seven, six or seven tickets the other day, on Monday, and I just happen to know two of the individuals. and these were people that were opening up and, and, and giving residents, selling residents food, without any type of regulation, either from the city or from the health department, and that's one reason why I've always pushed for this, so that we can have it regulated, monitored, and then make sure that people are going through the process, and make sure that they're going through the health department, so that we're not just getting anybody that can open one up, because the way it was in the past, unfortunately, um, you know, I could walk up tomorrow evening and then just open up a food tent and start selling people food, and I could have maybe no hygiene, no plumbing, no electric, et cetera, et cetera, so that's the main reason for this.
Council Chair, thank you so much, and I want you to know that, uh, the, the administration and the ordinance office has done a great job on enforcing it, I believe, uh, they were going around, they gave, I think about, what is it, Mayor, seven, six or seven tickets the other day? On Monday, and I just happened to know two of the individuals, and I said, hey, listen, our process is very easy, you're already licensed by the health department, you already have liability insurance, uh, you've already did the eye check because you're in a festival down the street, if you want to be in Dearborn Heights, just submit your paperwork and put the five hundred dollar bond, and if you clean up and you, you don't destruct anything for those, you know, hundred and eighty days or thirty days that you're there, or the one weekday you're there, or even if it's one day, you show them the blue slip, you get your five hundred dollar bond back. I swear to you, Dearborn Heights is so easy when it comes to doing this, if you have all your ducks in line, you're gonna get approved. If you're gonna try to, you know, wiggle your way in and try to get yourself approved, you're not gonna get approved, and you're gonna get a ticket, plain and simple. Uh, so if anybody is open illegally, uh, I, I know that the administration, the mayor's office, I spoke to him this week, said, hey, I'm going around, we're gonna ticket anybody that doesn't have it, and if you think you're gonna open up in the middle of the night when we're not looking, that's what, we have pictures, we know, we see it on social media, you're gonna get a ticket, so, uh, my hat to the administration on that, and my hat to those who are going out of their way to do it the right way.
Thank you, uh, and those discussions on this. Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on agenda is item D, which has been removed by Controller King, and then we have item...
Thirteen.
Business.
Thirteen A, uh, new business, uh, license renewals.
Council Chair.
Councilwoman Breyer. We'll go to Councilwoman Breyer.
Okay, I'll make the motion, that the Dearborn Heights City Council renew the business licenses for Polish Legion of American Veterans number sixteen, commonly known as PLAV, at two-five-two-two-two Warren, and Jenny's Gin Mill at four-nine-zero-one South Telegraph, as outlined in thirteen A.
Council Chair, we have, we have other ones to, uh...
Oh, are we adding?
And the application, are we gonna do applications for the, on the same thing?
No, that's separate.
Oh, that's separate, I'm sorry. Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, supported by Councilman, seconded by Councilman Muscat, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on agenda is item thirteen B.
Council Chair.
No chair, Councilman Ahmad, go ahead.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the temporary food truck, tent, car, business license application for Shawarma Meech, La Fork, and Heights Hot Dogs, as outlined in thirteen dash B.
Support. Okay, uh, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, supported by Councilman Badun, any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
Just want you to know, I was actually, two thousand thirteen, I was actually the founder of the Heights Hot Dogs, actually, they're coming back for their second year, uh, and they're going to look to get approved, as well as La Fork, if you guys don't know, La Fork is a, uh, very unique restaurant, it's stationed, they're brick and mortar, they're actually trying to open up in Dearborn Heights, so in the meantime, they're giving back donations to the local mosque, and they're going to be testing the market to see if it's worth opening up a second location, I believe they were looking to go to Ann Arbor, I kind of had a conversation with them, like, why don't you come to Dearborn Heights, you're a little farther from Dearborn Heights, even though you're in West Dearborn, and, uh, Sam is with us today, and so is Mr. Kasab, uh, I've also spoken with the owner of the Shawarma, I don't know what his name is, but we're just gonna go with Shawarma, he's on the corner of Ford Road and Beach Daily, and I spoke with the owner, he said it was helping, you know, pick up business, uh, during the nighttime, so, congratulations, well, hopefully, if it gets approved, congratulations to you guys, and don't forget, don't lose your blue split, your blue slip, like Rick Watland said, or else you're not gonna get your five hundred dollar bond back again.
Okay, um, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried, congratulations. Uh, next item on the agenda is members of the public, comments from council members.
Council Chair.
All right. Councilman Badun.
All right, I'm so sorry, guys, I hate to be the one that wants to leave, but tonight, my family does once every five years, a three hundred and fifty people gathering, all my first cousins, second cousins, aunts, uncles, everybody.
Council members.
Well, not council members.
Go ahead.
Friends and family, and so today's the actual dinner, my wife keeps asking, texting me, and, and, you know, she's having me texting you all day
to make sure that you're gonna come, uh, I haven't been able to look at my phone, but I know that during the meeting, I read twenty messages, are you coming, I'm here alone, your son's here, he's going crazy.
Okay.
So I'm gonna leave. And so forgive me, guys, for not being here, but I'm so sorry for leaving, I swear, I will stay at every single one while I'm fasting.
I gotta drive it too, I think. All right, the addresses?
Great revelation.
Okay. It's gonna happen, a great revelation. All right, any other council members, Councilman Muscat, go ahead.
Uh, we've got a little issue with our trash recycling issue, um, I know it's not, um, uh, the city's real big problem to, to try to fix, but the recycling portion of our, our trash pickup is not any good. Uh, the recyclers don't want us to, to package our recycling in plastic bags, so myself, I put the bottles in the can and paper and, uh, whatever, and then they come and pick up the can and they dump it and they flies all over. And I'm not going to expect a driver to get out and pick up every single thing that flies out, especially when the wind was thirty and forty miles an hour. But there's gotta be a way we can contact or, or the recycling company, say, look, this is a big problem, if people can put their, their recycling in a clear plastic bag, or have the, the trash company, uh, have these, um, uh, trash bins picked up where they load them in the back, okay, uh, have a guy just wheel it up there, they pick it up and dump it in the back, it would eliminate ninety-five to ninety-nine percent of the trash that's floating around, and people who care about this city are out there cleaning this mess up, uh, up and down the blocks, okay, not just on their house, but they walk up and down the streets and do this. And, and things have gotta change, I mean, we just can't continue to do this if we want to have a nice looking city. I mean, it starts with all of us, and, and we've gotta help the residents help themselves, so, if we can contact the recyclers or, or, or recycle, or trash pickup people and say, hey, look, can't we use a backload vehicle to pick up the recycling, instead of the front loader where, uh, I know it, it's two guys, but it, it's gonna help, it's trash, it's trash maintenance, and, and we, we gotta keep it up, uh, so, I'm, I'm looking at that, and second of all, I had sent an email to Mr. Deeb, um, I also spoke with DPW Director, and I started initiating, uh, a conversation with the city of Inkster, who then started sending out emails to Dearborn Heights about the reconstruction of Cherry Hill Road. Cherry Hill Road is just, it, it, it's impassable, come on, even on our side, we got more potholes and more, uh, speed bumps on that road, too bad the speed bumps weren't in school districts, okay, it, it's horrible, and I want to know, uh, from either our DPW Director.
I signed something today regarding that, from, uh, that, uh, the city of Inkster is sharing with us, so it was signed today, so it's in the work.
Okay, I, because, I, you know, I've been crying about Cherry Hill for a long time, and it's a joint venture, and, and it's time that road gets fixed, it's, it's... I've never seen a road this bad in our city since, uh, eight years ago, Ann Arbor Trail, uh, when it, before it was being done, so.
I was, that was signed today, and also, I just sent an email to Priority, so.
Okay, thank you very kindly, and, and hopefully, we can get this recycle issue put to bed once and for all.
Okay, any other comments, go ahead, Councilwoman.
I have a, a comment from a lady I talked to on the phone today, she was suggesting that we have police officers here for our council meetings.
We have four.
Thank you, gentlemen, and, uh, her dad was a police officer for this city quite a while ago, so I thank you very much for being here.
Okay, thank you, any other, uh, comments from council members? Yes.
Uh, thank you, Council Chair, um, quickly, regarding the, the, uh, money for the petty cash for the police department, um, and I, I said the specifics when I was talking, but, uh, in two thousand eight, many years ago, I, I, at Kim Worthy's request, brought her up to Lansing to testify in front of judiciary, because, uh, they were appeals, for example, the, the prosecutor's office has twenty-one days, it's not filed, it's not paid for, and this was back before debit cards or any of that, then, then the, the first degree murder of Quito stands, so, it's a question of efficiency, efficiency, that's all I've got to say.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and secondly, quickly, I want to say hello to a longtime friend of mine, someone I knew from high school, uh, graduated a year behind me, a very beautiful young lady, I, her father, Joseph Gadian and I are going to be meeting at the Hungarian Rhapsody Restaurant, uh, probably later this year, thank you, Council Chair.
Good. Next up.
Just want, uh, Council Chair, just would like to wish, uh, Councilman Constant a happy belated birthday, and I'm sorry I missed your party, let's push it.
Thank you. Happy birthday, Councilman.
Yes.
I got one more. Ray Muscat was there and he was, said words for the whole council. I, I just want to make sure that everybody remembers, uh, April seventh is Good Friday, and the ninth is Easter Sunday, for all my Christian friends, uh, out there, uh, please have a, uh, a, a good, blessed holiday, and, and, uh, Good Friday is the holiest of holiest, uh, along with Easter, and let's remember, uh, why we have these days, thank you.
Okay, thank you, next up is announcements from administration, anybody in administration?
Somebody, Latanya wants to talk.
Yeah, we'll have it under administration, uh... Thank you, Mayor. Next up is announcements from administration, any announcements, we'll go ahead and start with, uh, as you know, I always go with the ladies first, so, Ms. Latanya Gator, go ahead.
All right, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, ma'am.
Very good, good evening, everyone, community, to the honorable body of city council, to city administration, my name is Latanya Gator, from Dearborn Heights, Michigan, um, speaking on behalf of the Dearborn Heights Community and Cultural Relations Commission. First and foremost, I would like to say to our list of residents, happy and blessed Ramadan, definitely would like to wish you all the best Ramadan, and please stay blessed, and to let you all know that we support you in any way that we can. Definitely want to echo what Councilman Ray Muscat said, to those who will be celebrating Easter in the upcoming days, we, we, on behalf of the CCRC, bid you a very safe and blessed Easter. Uh, my second comment is, I had noticed that there was an appointment made by the mayor to the CCRC, I apologize for not being able to make it to the meeting in person, however, I wanted to personally say congratulations on that person's appointment, and my humble request is that someone from administration connect me to that person, so we can start bookworming process. Finally, April is Autism Acceptance Month, and in standard CCRC fashion, we collect donations, um, what I consider to be essential items that those with autism can benefit from, um, I have, we have made a posting on our Facebook page, Dearborn Heights Community and Cultural Relations Commission, that says the nomination process, we're looking to give throw baskets to two children and two adults in our community who have autism spectrum disorder, and we are asking that those who are able to participate and donate, check out our Facebook page, I have listings of an Amazon listing, as well as other listings you can, uh, refer to, to make purchases, again, I appreciate you all this evening, and have a great night.
Thank you, Latanya, appreciate it, any other announcements from, Commander, Treasurer?
Thank you, and good evening, speaking as a treasurer, first of all, um, Mayor, thank you for working with Inkster, the city of Inkster, in particular with Cherry Hill Road, and, um, you know, trying to get that resolved, because that definitely is difficult to navigate and drive, and also, thank you for your comment and moment of silence, as you know, our flags are at half-mast until the end of this month, uh, to remember the different shootings, school shootings, in particular what happened in Nashville, um, this week, on a different note, what I want to share is, we had our resource fair here yesterday, last night, and we had a very good turnout, we were able to help several people with delinquent taxes, delinquent mortgages, utility bills, I want to thank Wayne County Treasurer Eric Sabri and his staff, they were phenomenal, they always are. Uh, we had DTE here, I thank them, Melina was here, I thank them as well, as well as Wayne Metro, My Half program that you approved, and LeWAP, LeWAP, yep, LeWAP, it's hard to say, um, here signing people up and helping them navigate, connect the dots, so I really appreciate that, and thank all of those individuals and everyone that came out, but also, I want to let you know, it doesn't stop there. We are going to be, uh, putting flyers in our libraries, our senior centers, we talked about networking with our neighborhood groups, um, you know, Focus Hope Food Boxes, whatever we can do to get the word out about My Half and LeWAP, so we can get people to sign up, because the funds are available, and we are gonna have, uh, two dates in August, after the summer tax deadline, um, in person, where you can make appointments, to sign up and have someone help you sign up online for those programs. So that is in the work, and you'll hear more about that in the Dearborn Heights Today paper coming up, thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer, any other public comments? Uh, next up is Mr. Hassan Jamal. Mike, were you trying to...
Council Chair.
Yes, chief. Oh, yeah, absolutely, so, hold off Hassan, one second. We got the police chief.
Council Chair, then we have Michael McCaffrey.
Yeah, but I can't, he doesn't, oh, nice guys, okay.
It's hard to see with the gold background.
Oh, okay, I see that.
I just, uh, quickly, because I know, uh, first of all, Ramadan Kareem, to all of us that are celebrating the holy month, I just want to say thank you for supporting our Body worn Camera Initiative and our in-car cameras, our in-car cameras will be updated later this summer, but all of our officers completed their, uh, mandatory training last week, so we're all up to speed on our body cameras that we're, we're wearing right now, so Officer Perzwarra, I don't know, I think ours might be nicer, um, and Officer Caballero are both wearing them, Director Swope, myself. Uh, one of the, the awesome features that you approved is the ability to go live, so, uh, last week, and I sent council of communication on this, Dearborn had, uh, two individuals bail out of a car right across from the police department, I was able to go live with Director Swope in his office, we could see our officers running, setting up perimeters, uh, these are GPS, there's also some gunshot, um, alerts that we get, uh, we had to turn them off, uh, they're very sensitive, so in the middle of the night, my phone keeps going off, that, you know, we might have some, some staff that are, uh, in peril, we get up and check our phones, just to make sure that our staff are, are safe, um, but one of the things that, that really for me has been uh, eye-opening to watch, to go live and to look at the video, is how important it is to have a police department that's reflective of the community. There is a significant amount of translation, uh, that's taking place on our calls for service and on our traffic stops, so, uh, it's been very refreshing to see, uh, the great work that our police officers are doing out there every day, and I just wanted to, to let you know, if you want to come by the police department, uh, we'll fire up the, uh, uh, computer, or we can actually look at it on my phone and go live with some of our staff members, and it's pretty, it's a pretty cool, uh, piece of technology, so thank you again for supporting our police officers and keeping us safe.
And thank you to all of our police officers and firemen for their service, thank you.
Very welcome.
All right, next up, we have our, what sounds like our advertising manager, our radio host, uh, Mike, go ahead.
Uh, hello, Council Chair and Mayor, I just wanted to wish everyone a happy Ramadan and a happy Easter next week. Um, wanted to remind everyone about the book sale this weekend, Thursday from ten to eight, Friday from ten to four, and Saturday from ten to four at Carolyn Kennedy Library, lots of books have been stored up, um, so come on out and get some good deals, and that is it, thanks for your time, and see you at the library.
See you at the library, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next up, we'll have Mr. Hassan Jamal, go ahead, sir. Go ahead, Director. Director, can you hear me? Director Hassan Jamal.
He's muted. Yes, now I can, I've just been unmuted. From the CEDD staff and myself, at the Community Economic Development Department of the city of Dearborn Heights, we congratulate our citizen for the month of Ramadan and for the coming Easter. At the same time, I need to remind all the citizens and residents of Dearborn Heights that the program the Treasurer was talking about, I needed to be explained that anybody who is delinquent on taxes, water, and DTE, or rent, they can apply to the state of Michigan. who is delinquent on taxes, water, and DTE, or rent, they can apply to the State of Michigan program. We at the Community and Economic Development don't have anymore, the program that we used to assist, available, because of regulatory duplication of benefit, now the state offering the same, and actually, the State of Michigan offering better program, up to $25,000. So that's what we call MI, help whatever that program is, I need to make sure that everybody know it is taxes, water, rent, and mortgages also. They all can be paid by the State of Michigan, nishda.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Director. Okay, next up is, we have Latanya Gator. Go ahead, Tanya.
I apologize to everyone. I forgot to announce two other comments or statements.
What?
One being that the CCRC, we held and hosted a polling drive in honor of Women's History Month, in participation with the Red Centers at Richard A. Young, as well as Panfield, and then all of these seven schools were a drop-off location. We had a magnificent turnout of polling that we were able to donate to Purple Heart donations in Westlake. So kudos to the CCRC, to the drop-off centers, and to everyone who donated. Also, wanted to lift up happy Women's History Month, and to all the Women's History makers in the room and on the Zoom call. Congratulations to you all. Lastly, um, oh, it's pleadingly, but I don't want to keep anyone here any longer than what anyone needs to be. Thank you all again.
Okay, thank you, Latanya. Any other announcements from administration? Go ahead.
Okay, I'm only going to do one this time. It's for the South Dearborn Heights Civic Association. The date is April 27. It's a Thursday at 7:00 PM. Our two speakers will be Parks and Rec, Kim Lorenzell, and also for those who are familiar with Tom Roscoe. He's going to explain Brownfield, which is part of Latifah situation for those in the South, and particularly the Robishaw School District. It should be of great interest. 3335, South Beach Daily. Hope to see you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And I do want to say, Councilwoman, thank you for consistently putting those two programs on.
All right, no problem.
As you know, I've been to a lot of them, and really impressed. Thank you.
And he usually donates whenever he wins.
Thank you.
At the 50.
Okay, next up is public comments. You will have three minutes. Please state your name, city, and street. I guess you're first. You did ask for an extra minute, and I told you you would have it, so you'll have four minutes, sir.
When this counts down, sir, when this counts down, I'll reset your time, okay?
Yeah, yeah. I think there's none. I don't know.
Okay, so anything that's, okay, so anything that's passed down will automatically be also given to the city attorney, and will be automatically registered as a part of the minutes, too, just FYI.
Good afternoon. Is everybody ready?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, good afternoon. My thing is not working. No. It's on, but, oh, it's working? Maybe I can hear myself. Anyways, my name is Hassan Ayoun. I'm a public activist for Michigan, all over Michigan. At this time, I gave you guys a paper that says the Treasurer said here, and harassed me on my Facebook when I was doing a live, "Oh, I got your FOIA request. Oh, let's go get some coffee." I'm married, okay? I don't need my wife to come and ask me, "Who are you?" No, excuse me.
But talk through me.
Yeah, but excuse me. Okay, I'm a married gentleman. I don't need my wife to sit there and ask me, "Who is Lisa?" So, I don't know. Then I can't find out her. For what? Why you, why you sending a comedy on my Facebook? Tell me, let's go for a coffee. For what? What she need to go for? Because I submitted a FOIA? Just to let you guys know, a whistleblower person called me and said, put this on the record, that she called the city regarding the Treasurer, that the Treasurer's been doing something with the bank accounts.
I'm going to object.
Hold on, hold on.
No, no, stop.
Nothing slanderous.
I'm not, I'm not slandering. I said, a whistleblower person called me.
Okay, no, your time has stopped. One second. Go ahead, Corporation Council. I object to the statements. It's hearsay number one. I don't, I think it begs for a response and an argument. If he has any specific information, there are avenues to get it to the Council Chair, get it to the administration, have an investigation.
Where's my index cards?
But you have options.
Where's my index cards?
But I'm not going to agree to you speaking and slandering somebody.
It's not slander.
It is.
How is slander when I said somebody called me?
You brought a personal, you brought a personal message that you interpreted, and then you made it a personal relationship.
Not personal.
About romantic relationship possibility to your wife, and that's not, that's not, no, no, no.
I submitted the Facebook. She sat there.
That is not correct, sir.
Listen, there's multiple stuff on my, that's the first, let's go on my Facebook.
And if you keep talking over me.
Okay, fine, then. That's why you're going to call me alive.
No, no, it's not an issue of lying or not.
So.
Okay, no, it's not an issue of lying or not. Could you focus on comment, on business, related to the City Council and City. That's your personal business. Then take that out.
Allow him to finish his comment. I don't want to stop your comment. Allow him to finish his comment. Go ahead.
Yeah, if it's a personal issue, you can contact Facebook and stop it if it's a Facebook issue.
Okay.
It's not, it's not city business.
Okay, it's not city business. No problem. We'll talk about city business. Where's my index cards? Much my time. I got more time. Come on. Where's my index cards? I did a FOIA request. Where's my FOIA request? She wants to charge me $2,000 for a FOIA request? For what? For bank accounts that you can push, push the button and print? $2,000 for what?
I don't push any buttons.
Then who's, who's talking about the FOIA?
If you want, if you want to learn what a FOIA is, then you take your time, and you meet with the administration, and you find out.
What?
What a FOIA request entails.
Of course I do.
How much work it takes.
It doesn't matter.
You don't know.
You know what? I just demanded the FOIA. I just want the index cards. Where's the index cards?
Mariana's preparing it for you.
Do you have my index cards today? I'm going to go home with my index cards. I want to give them to my son, my grandchild, let him play with the index cards.
You can play with it, you can throw it, you can spit on it, but you, we'll get it for you. It's not an issue.
I tell you, it's definitely being worked on.
It's worked on?
It's being worked on.
She said she has index cards.
I know, but you FOIA'd the Treasurer's office. It is definitely being worked on. I personally spoke with her. It's definitely been worked on, and I presume you'll be getting it.
$2,000 for, for what?
No, 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 the index.
Sure, it's a, it's a big building?
The index cards are not being charged for.
Okay, why? I don't want the bank accounts. You guys can keep them. Give me the index cards. That's all I want.
Okay.
I, I, I meant it by FOIA. I don't want the bank accounts.
All right.
Is there something wrong with that?
She's in the process of getting them for you.
The process? How long does that take to get index cards to, to sit there?
Something that's up to her, obviously, answer. I can answer.
Oh, you can't answer her question, right? But she wants to sit there and criticize me on my Facebook, on my person. A Treasurer sit there, "Yeah, let me go for a coffee." I'm good. Don't even start that with me again. Please. Do not go on my Facebook, because you work here, and I don't know you from here. Don't go on my Facebook and say anything to me. Okay? Just to let you know that. This is not something personal here. This is not, nothing about business. This is something that she put, and she, as a public official, she's not supposed to even say nothing to me.
Okay. If you're not happy with her comments, your best tactic is block her.
I'm just telling you.
All right.
She can say whatever she wants to say, but I like to expose her right in front of the public, so she won't do it again.
Okay.
You know, she may, then maybe she, make her, learn her lesson. Because I don't need my, what, 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 excuse me? I'm not interrupting you. You're sticking up for her because she's a lady. That's up to you.
No, sir.
But I'm not interrupting you, am I?
You don't have to shout.
That's, oh, that's not your business. Why would I say something to anybody?
You don't need to yell. You don't need to yell.
Did you see how you guys, you guys are a bunch of kids.
Your tone, and your demeanor is disruptive to this meeting now.
I'm going to say whatever I want to say.
You can say, but you don't have to scream it. You don't have to scream it.
Excuse me.
Councilman.
Please, I'm not going to sit there and talk to you guys. Don't bother.
One more word. Okay, one more word. It'll be stopped by the police. That's it. That's enough.
I don't care. What's the police going to do? I got my minutes. You're not going to tell me nothing. It's freedom of speech.
I apologize. You done?
Well, here, you want to put my hands behind my back? That's what you want to see?
That's up to you.
Go ahead.
All right, we're going to take a recession.
Ah, man, shit.
Council Chair.
A second. Yeah, time is up.
Council Chair, I want to say something here.
Okay.
Many, many times, I have asked Lisa for coffee. Lisa's asked me for coffee, and it's always friendship, discussion of business, and it was nothing ever.
Let's go back to the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, let's not go back to that. Okay.
All right.
Okay, we're back. All right, meeting started again. Come on up, ma'am. Say your cities. I'm sorry, cities, streets.
Give me one second, please. One second, so I can reset your timer, okay?
Okay.
I want to make sure you get your full time, and you can start anytime you're ready.
Okay. Give my name and the street.
Yeah.
My name is Linda Reed. The street is Dixie Lane.
Okay, Dearborn Heights.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Woo, this is something different here, altogether here. But nonetheless, I wanted to say, concerning the trash that be put out, my neighbor next door to me, he put out a lot of stuff, boxes and what have you, and when the wind blows or what have you, it could get in my yard, anybody else's and what have you. And it, there's a couple of them that does, have three of them that doesn't. But what I'm saying is this, if the city would give them notice that this is not what they should be doing, then I think they would stop that, because it's like, you got mans, I'm looking at two and three mans in one house. You mean to tell me you can't get that garbage can that has two wheels on it, and all you got to do is push it and pull it back? They don't even pull it, sometimes they don't even pull it back in. It stays out there for a whole week, a whole day. I don't want to look at that. I pay my taxes. And it shouldn't be done like that, but if nobody's saying anything, nothing is going to be done. And when the trash people come out, they take those truck, and the trash that they have on it, the thing go back, and when it goes back, everything flies everywhere, like you were saying. They don't, they're not going to get out, well, I'll see it, because I'll be looking at them. They're not going to get out and pick their trash up. They're not going to get it up. But if the people were put their trash, and some of those little bags, plastic bags, it won't fly all over everything. It will go in where they trying to put it, you know, in the back of that truck like that. And I think it's just ridiculous that someone have to deal with that. It really is. You pay your taxes, you try to do what the city says, you know what the rules are, and you got other people. But see, what they fail to understand, when you mess up and do those things, somebody else is going to do it too, because I'm looking at what's happening. I've been here for 20 years in Dearborn Heights, and I'm looking at how things are changing. And it's not changing for the good. I'm telling you like it is. It's not changing for the good. It's changing for the bad, because when nobody's saying anything, everybody's feel they have, well, let's put it like this. I don't know what they feeling, but they have the privilege. They're doing everything they want to do. I don't want to see that mess. I wouldn't put it out like that, and I don't want to see anyone else's trash that they have put out. And if the city would, would get on their cases and tell them not to do it, and put that stuff in some bags, it wouldn't be flying all over like that. They just throw stuff just all in there, and the minute they pull it up, everything flies everywhere. Now, I put my trash out, but I got to go out and pick somebody else's trash up. I don't want to pick other people's trash up. It's okay for me to put mine's in the bag, but why should I pick someone else's up? Now, this is what I'm saying. All it takes is just a little bit of wrongdoing, and you're going to have a problem. I'm used to it, because I came out of some small little places, out of Detroit, and I saw some things. So I have had that, and that's why I moved here. But now this place is starting looking like the other places now. You can go around, and you can see these homes and everything. You can see all that stuff. I know, I figured you were going to say that, but nonetheless.
But, you know, you and I are on the same page.
No, we're not.
Yeah, we are.
Because I heard what you said in the beginning. I don't think you wanted me to say anything, but I'm going to say it anyway.
Well, I, you know, the recyclers don't want us to put them in a bag. It's not us. It's the. Well, that's what I'm trying to say. I asked the administration to look into this, so we can do it, or we go back to the old-fashioned way of putting the trash can from the back of the truck, so it doesn't fly all over the place. I said that. Those are my words exactly. I, I, I have the same thing.
We always talk about.
I have the same thing.
Okay. Street, city name, please.
Hassan Saab, John Daly, Dearborn Heights. I have a few questions for the Chief of Police, if it's okay. So this is a direct question from a FOIA request I had. I had requested a FOIA request regarding my name and my address from the Treasurer's office. I got an email for her, from the Building Department, everything. She's saying that my, my permits and everything on my property and everything with my name was being requested by the Dearborn Heights Police Department. I just want to know, is, do you have any record, Chief, that you guys are requesting any records about my house that I can provide, that the Treasurer would have to request? Please, if you guys can stop my minutes, please.
Yeah.
So I did have a conversation with the Treasurer regarding a records request.
I'm sorry, just for the record, my attorney is on Zoom, so this is being entered under record. Thank you.
So there was a conversation, there was a report that was made, and I had a follow-up conversation with the Treasurer in regards to not requesting records on behalf of the police department, that the issue appeared to be a civil matter, not a criminal matter, and that the police department obviously only deals in criminal issues. So.
Thank you, sir.
And then my other question is, to the Treasurer herself, when did you, when did you take office?
It was in November 18, 2020.
2020. So why in this email, multiple times, you put November 18, 2022?
It could be November.
Okay, but, but this is an email, multiple emails you've sent. Thank you. Here it says that, at the last meeting, I said that I gave her a check to cash, which is false. If she would have watched the meeting and viewed the recordings that was, I told her I gave her a copy of the check that was cashed. So did the mayor, multiple times. So that's, that's another issue I'm having. And then she says in here, the city was closed until mid, midsummer 2022.
May I see that, please?
You can, you have a, it's not altered. This was a FOIA request through the mayor. Please stop my minutes, please.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, if I, if I can stop for a sec, just one second. Ma'am Treasurer, just because this is potentially, as he said, his attorney's on there and possibly potential for lawsuit. I'm not an attorney, but.
Just for the record, these documents were submitted by the city.
I advise, I advise not to respond, but it's your choice.
Okay, go ahead, start it.
Okay.
We'll, we'll add that. He's missing 10 seconds. Why, 10 seconds?
Going to wait till 10 seconds.
Okay.
Okay.
You go ahead, start. I'm going to count 10 seconds, and I'm going to start.
Sure. And then she claims on here, she's searching the city if there was a lawsuit filed. As I said, my attorney is on Zoom. I am personally suing you. This has nothing to do with the city. I'm going to go after you personally for slander. Also, like, she handles our budget. She handles all the money. She handles numbers. Her phone number on these, on these emails, it's the three-digit code, and then she has a four-digit, instead of a three-digit, it's a four-digit. Like, like, I really believe she's incompetent for her job. I really believe that she does not have the capability to do her job. She sends emails saying that she thinks she has some kind of authority over residents to the police department, saying this is a police department request. This is something that should be looked into. She has no authority over anybody. She has no authority to be looking into any of my business. Period. Then again, she claims here falsely again, that I told her, I handed her a check, and she cashed it. In the last meeting, I said, I handed it. The mayor walked me over, Rick walked me over, and so did Kim. I had a certified copy that was cashed by the city from my bank account, and I handed it to her, and I came with her and sat back here without the conference meeting. She denied that. There's three city, two city officials, the mayor himself, and our Assessor's office, they all talked to me about Twitter, and she's denying that that happened. That's an issue. She, you know, anytime that somebody picks on her, she claims she goes into her religious verbs and her sorrow. She's an elected official. She should be held to standards, should be held accountable. And about this, Mayor, I mean, I mean, is this something that, that happens often with her, that she requests this stuff with authority? What kind of authority does she have over the police department, corporate counsel? And since my house is, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Roger, Roger, cut your off. Since my house is already in litigation with the city, my construction, isn't it not illegal for anybody to give any information, since it's in litigation?
I, we're not going to discuss it.
No, 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 no. This is not personally about my personal, but any property that's in litigation, can you just go and request and get copies of any information on it?
It's a vague question, and I'm not going to answer that.
Okay.
Okay, your time is up.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any public comments? Come on up. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Neda Pigian. I reside on Rosetta Street in Military Hill Subdivision, Dearborn Heights. My concern is, I wonder, I, that I may have lost my opportunity to express my ideas about the COVID-19 federal grant that's been issued to the city and many cities. I would like to make sure that this money only be used to prevent flooding issues, but flooding issues that affect everybody, just not people in the South End. We're blessed or cursed with three major watersheds. We can't control that, but there are some ideas around that we should, in the city of Dearborn Heights, create a retention basin for water that comes from the west, primarily from the airport and Romulus. We shouldn't use a penny of that money for that. Communities north of us or west of us, they should be building retention ponds and not putting their water into us. So do not spend one penny to retain water from Romulus and the airport. What we should be spending money on is the combined sewer problems we have. Because when you have fecal matter that goes through the system and it floods in everybody's neighborhood, that's a mess, that's intolerable, and later it can go into the street. That affects everybody. Use every dime of this money to solve the combined sewer problems in the city of Michigan, in the city of Dearborn Heights. And the other issue that's just as important is the sewer lines that are too small. We have to create a shunt to get the, to get the foul sewers separated. We can't change all the lines, but we can shunt off those that we know about that go to the, that go to the treatment plant. This is something that affects all of us. That $24 million can't do anything with the E Course Creek. That's a drop in the bucket. That's a problem for the county, the state, and the federal government. A penny of that $24 million should not be spent on that. We need to stop the foul sewer mixture with our storm sewers. That affects everybody. Now, unless you give everybody backwater preventers in their house, so nothing comes back in, that's the ultimate solution. Thank you.
Counselor Chair.
Thank you.
Counselor Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to speak as a resident real quick.
Counselor Chair.
It's not gonna take much.
Can I answer?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Mayor.
So, Mr. Pigian, just to let you know, we're actually using a lot of grants to do what you, uh, we, we have a grant that we're working on right now, and that's just to do what you just mentioned, for the combined sewer. And I, I can tell you, in the past, a lot of money that was wasted by the city in the past, you know, money that we could have gotten grants for, we could have done more work for the city, but money was wasted, taxpayers' money was wasted instead of getting grants. So right now, I can tell you, we are working on a lot of grants. You know, we actually have a lot of earmarks. We're working with both US Senators and our two Congress, and also our state reps and a state senator. So we have money that is earmarked. You know, there's, there might be something positive that, you know, once the earmark is allocated, you know, we'll, we'll make the announcement. But we are, my staff is working diligently, and Mr. Deep, our city engineer, Mr. Conrad from DPW, and also obviously, I mean, everybody in, in the city, even both Chief Hart, Chief Brogan, they're trying to get grants from outside instead of using taxpayers' money. And this is a huge issue, I agree with you. We are trying to figure out a way, you know, with trying to get grants through various agencies. In fact, I was in Washington DC about two weeks ago. I met with 13, 15 actually, with two Rs, but 13 other Congress members. And the reason why we met with them, it was actually through the Great Lakes Water, St. Lawrence Conference that invited me on their own dime, not city. And we talked about, basically, they want us to talk about what's going on. Dearborn Heights has never been on the map, they never even thought about Dearborn Heights. So now, when, when they do, our Congress talks about something that's gonna be allocated, you know, for Dearborn Heights, they're gonna put a face to whatever vote that they make and, on our behalf. So we are working very diligently, all my directors, my Chief of Staff. They're, you know, we're trying to apply for as many grants as possible so we don't overburden our residents.
I'm concerned about the $24 million. I appreciate the idea that you're getting other grants. That $24 million that's a gift to us should be used for the combined sewer issues. I remember in the past, former mayors would say, we solve the combined sewer problems.
Well, we gotta follow Eagle, whatever Eagles has a mandate on us to do that. So that's what we're doing, is we're following whatever Eagle mandate.
All right, come on up, sir.
Leonard Isaac, Huron Street, Dearborn Heights. I'm a lifelong resident of Dearborn Heights. I went to Dearborn Heights Redskins, I'm president. And I know there's been a lot of talk about changing the name. And we agree, you know, times have come now where probably, I mean, the name has to be changed. But our problem is, is the uniforms. You know, we're a youth football and cheer organization, ages six to 13, in the South End. Our registration fees in that area are kept to the minimum so we can provide youth in that area a place to play football and cheer for tackle. We've been there since 1970. I've been involved since 1990. We're, uh, we're, you know, we want to change our name. I understand that. People's calling for the name change and all that, I understand that. But the uniforms we have, and the cheer uniforms and all that, they got Redskins on everything. In order to change them, that takes fees. And in that area, you can't raise the fees and pass it along to the kids or the parents. We allow kids to play who don't have the fees, don't have the money. We do not reject nobody because of that. We're nonprofit. We've had so many kids that go on to play college ball, go on to, uh, play pros. I mean, it is what it is, you know? But in order to continue to have the kids in that area, we change the name and give them something to do, we change the name. But the uniforms, can we use the same uniforms? And just have the name change on paper? Until we get the money, be able to afford to buy uniforms? That's my question. I'm looking for help, anything. Because these kids need a, need an outlet. We, we have them four months a year. Late July to November. Two hours a day, five days a week. We give them something to do, productive. We had 20 coaches, cheerleading coaches. The cheerleaders have won numerous medals in competitions against other cities. We play in a league where the football teams have done outstanding. So I mean, you know, the, I, I, I'm just at a loss for words on this. Like, I understand they want it changed, but how do we do it?
Okay, so just a quick answer, sir.
Yeah.
First of all, I, I, I think for a lot of residents or people that are concerned about the name, I think it's a great starting point when an organization like yourself says, okay, we're ready to change the name. That, that's, that's great news, okay?
Well, we've been wanting to change it, we just don't have.
And I think, I think it's a great idea. So I think that, that helps people, you know, people aren't gonna, know it's not gonna happen overnight. They also know that the finances of some of the residents and some of the parents is, is obviously a little bit more limited. So it's gonna be problematic for everything to change overnight. You're not the Washington Redskins.
Correct.
Where you could throw $30 million and change it in two seconds. I get that. But it's a, I think it's a great gesture on your end to have this as a starting point. I learned a lot from Latanya Gator in the CCRC when I served on that, about how that name is offensive in honesty.
Right.
Early on, I didn't see how it would be offensive until they explained it to me in details. Then it made a lot more sense.
No, I, like I said, over time, I understood.
I do see it as offensive. But maybe you could work with the Parks and Recreation, maybe Department, possibly?
Well.
We met yesterday with CC, CC R with Latanya, actually. We would love to meet with him, sit down, see if we can draft a resolution that would include a financial.
Well, I would definitely love to have that. We're looking for, because I mean, we're nonprofit, so I know that.
And God bless you for serving on this, that's a great thing you're doing for the kids, God bless.
I mean, I've been involved 30 some years.
Yeah, I think, I think you deserve that.
You know, I'm not ready to give it up yet.
So give your name and number to Rod, do you have his contact info? Okay, so he'll sit down and talk to you right after the meeting, sir.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Thank you for coming. My son was on the Raiders, I know how great of a program those things are.
Counselor Chair, 30 seconds.
We have, one second, Councilman Muscat speaking as a resident.
Ray, this, I don't even have to put the timer, because this is gonna be quick. Ray Muscat, Havelock Street, Dearborn Heights. We've had a lot of accusation against people, and it's done disrespectfully. There's a way to call out elected officials, and that's by recalling them. If you don't like what we're doing, go down to the county and recall us. That way it's done, and it's respectfully, and you can get signatures from the residents, and you do it in that form. We are not attorneys, we're not going to do this. We're here to do the business of the city, and that's all. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Rachel Lapointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. Actually, that was one of the things I was gonna say to echo the previous resident. If you don't like an elected official, you can recall them, you can vote them out the next time. If you know there's criminal activity, there's people you can report it to. I, I'm a firm believer in if those avenues don't work, then we get up here, kind of thing. Like, if you don't, you know, if they're not listening and you know there's something going on, sure, bring it here. But I agree, there's ways to do that. Earlier, when we were discussing the golf course and the future work, I believe Mr. Muscat mentioned, like, the next 18 holes. I, I wouldn't necessarily be able to say this with 100% certainty, but I would think that anything after the C of O would then fall to the rest of the contract, and who's supposed to pay for what in the contract? And I believe that would be the Lisi, or Lessy, however you're supposed to say it. Again, Mr. Muscat mentioned that maybe in a few years, the golf course could be self-sustaining or bringing in income to the city. I don't really see how that would work, considering that when you look at the math from the original, when the contract was originally proposed, I know I did the math of bringing in $60,000 a year in rental income, nominal amount of green fees, with the amount of investment that we were putting in, I don't think that within the 20-year lease that we can make that back unless it became a raving success. And I hope that that's what happens. Another, I heard another police officer quit today. I don't know how many were down now, but I really hope that somebody's working on that. And then, a little bit more lighthearted, possums are awesome, guys. They are great, they eat tons of pesky bugs. They eat, each possum can eat 5,000 ticks a year. It's a huge benefit to have possums in your neighborhood. They hunt, kill, and eat rats. Possums are awesome, they are not one of the problem creatures, and I, I'm not a big fan of them, they're creepy. But let's not lump all animals that are wild into one bucket of, they're all bad, we need to make sure that we're not taking care of them. Because possums can be pretty awesome. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Latanya, I know you have your hand up on Zoom. Are you looking to speak during public comment, or is that still just up by accident?
I am looking to speak again, and I apologize for doubling that. Um, so I remember what my, what I.
Wait, I'm sorry, if I, if I may interrupt you, I didn't mean right now, but I tried to make sure. You want her to go first? Okay, she's letting you go ahead of her, go ahead. Go ahead, Latanya.
Thank you so much. My name is Latanya Gator, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, Madison Street. I forgot my announcement. I am chiming in on behalf of Duane County Women's Commission. I am the vice chair of that commission. We are a body under the Duane County Commission Chair by Alicia Bell. We're hosting a women's resource fair on April 27, 2023, which is a Thursday from 10 to 4 at WC3 Northwestern District. We are offering hiring services for all fields, both health and mental health services. And we're offering lunch to those who are willing to participate. Please find me on Facebook, my name is Latanya Gator, for the event right if you want to volunteer, as well as the event right if you would like to participate. I also want to speak, I know I can't speak directly to the gentleman who made the comment about the art scan. I am 100% open to meeting. I appreciate the progressive spirit towards this. And I can speak on behalf of the CCRC, because we've spoken about this before. We are willing to meet, to put our ideas together, to have fundraised, because we also know that this is not a one-and-done issue, and it'll take some time and some money to be able to do this right. So again, I just wanted to echo, I appreciate the progressive spirit, and we are here to get to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Latanya. Come on up.
Tanya Sterling, Westbrook Side, Dearborn Heights. So I came up, actually, on behalf of Mr. Isaac, I came here to help speak on behalf, or talk regarding the Dearborn Heights Redskins. I've been, my family's been a part of this community since the 60s. I'm fourth generation living here. So I, there's, we know there's a need to have the name changed, unfortunately. I know a lot of people, I feel, this is my feel, that it's, a lot of the people that have started this conversation have been here for a minute in the city compared to, I feel like myself. So they didn't maybe know the back history of the Dearborn Heights Redskins. And as Mr. Isaac said, it is a nonprofit. So for them, he's willing to change the name. For them to have to change the uniforms and the helmets and everything could cost them 50, $50,000 to $60,000. That is something this group does not have. They can do it over time, it may take them four to five years, but there's been talks of not funding them, not letting them play on the fields. That's not fair to the kids. They didn't choose the name, and that's not fair. This is keeping the kids off the streets, giving them something to do. As he mentioned, some of these kids can't pay for it, they don't charge them, they let them play. So over a name to not allow this, you know, for them to play, I think is terrible. They have had Native American people on the, the football team, coaching the football team. So I just, I, I know Mariana is speaking to them about possibly helping with it. I appreciate that, because again, I don't want to see these kids not have somewhere to play. He's mentioned they've had pro people come through. Tyrone Wheatley, there's a field named after him, went through the program. And he does, he's come back in the past. I think, I'm gonna say that Mr. Langford, I believe, came through the program. There's been others that have come through this program. So to not allow it over a name is, you know, I hope we can do better than that for these kids, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the audience?
Good evening again, Zuhairat Lha, Rosemary Street, Dearborn Heights. I wish Mr. Ali Deep is here. He left, and the controller left. I'm looking at the amounts of money you have approved today, and I'm looking at how much we spent already. From the ledger, the number was 1.570, approximately with some change. And with what you approved today, you have exceeded the $2.5 million which is allocated. Because you still have around the $385,000 left from the $800,000 for the CFO. That will put you at the deficit of over $365,000. You have approved today something which you don't have money in the line item, you know, for that expense. I don't know how the controller put that on the agenda and how this Mr. Deep missed it when he brought it to you. I hope next meeting, the first thing you do is to transfer money to that line item so you cover what you have approved today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Anybody else in the audience? Seeing none, anybody else on Zoom? Seeing none? Okay, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Motion adjourned by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Conston. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, motion carried. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, good night.